The December 5th, 2011 Planning and Zoning Commission is now in session. May I have the roll call, please?
Jim Frederick?
Here.
Connie Yoshimura?
Here.
Bruce Bell? Stacy Dean?
Here.
Terry Parks?
Here.
Dana Prue?
Here.
Richard Wilson?
Here.
Ray Hickel?
Here.
Peter Mulcahy?
Here.
Thank you. Item number B, the minutes. We have a draft minutes for the October 10th, 2011 meeting. May I have a motion for approval? Mr. Fredericks moved and seconded by Terry Parks. Are there any objections to the minutes for the October 10th, 2011? Seeing and hearing none, those minutes are approved. Item number C, Special Order of Business Executive Sessions. Item number one, disclosures. Commissioner Parks, will you do the disclosures, please?
Commissioner Deans, please.
None.
Commissioner Hickel?
No.
Commissioner Pruez?
Case number 2011-117. Petitioner GCI, I've done some work in the past for GCI as a contractor.
Any issues you with making a decision on this case?
Uh, no.
No conflicts, thank you. Madam Chair?
Uh, no.
I have none. Commissioner Wilson?
None.
Commissioner Mulcahy?
None.
Commissioner Fredericks?
None.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Parks. Item C2, Information Case 2011-133. Context Sensitive Solutions Transportation Project Concept Report. Goldenview Drive, Rabbit Creek Road to Romania Drive. This is not a public hearing. There will be no public testimony. May we hear from staff or a staff representative or a project consultant on this matter?
Madam Chair, I don't believe there's anyone here from PMNE to speak to the project. As it's on the agenda is information only.
I, as the Chair, have to convey a certain amount of disappointment in regards to that It is difficult for us to be able to ask questions unless there is a representative here.
Madam Chair, there is the consultant for the project is here tonight, but I don't believe anyone from PMNE is here.
All right. Would you please identify the consultant for us this evening?
Yes, it's Wendy Wilber here. She just had her hand up.
All right, thank you. Are there questions from the commission to the consultant? Are there no questions from commissioners regarding this? Well, if I may take a moment, I do have some questions of the consultant. Could you please come forward?
And Madam Chair, just to be clear, and this is the Old Eagle River Road. Is that the one you're?
No.
Okay, Goldenview.
We are on item C2, Case 2011-133, which is the Goldenview Drive. Thank you. If none of the other commissioners have any questions, then I have a couple of questions. All right, may we have your names for the record, please?
My name is Wendy Wilber, and I'm with CRW Engineering representing the municipality of Anchorage.
Okay.
And my name is Juan Lee. I'm with CRW Engineering also.
Okay. One of the questions that I have is a generic question regarding Goldenview Drive, and you may or may not have the answer to this question, but when the school was built on Goldenview Drive, were there any funds designated from the school district to contribute to the improvement of Goldenview Drive since they, the school district, has contributed greatly to the need for an upgrade due to the increased traffic?
At this time, I am not aware of any funds appropriated from the school to improve Goldenview Drive.
Could you tell me where the sewer and water are in Goldenview Drive?
According to the Hillside District Plan, there's limited expansion of water and sewer along Goldenview Drive. Essentially, it serves Prominence Point to the east, and it runs along Goldenview on the east side of it for a portion. And there is no, there are no plans as part of this project for any extensions.
Has there been any discussion with AWU for coordination of the road improvement with, in conjunction with water and sewer extension?
Yes, there has. That's ongoing. And just to clarify, we're very early in the process. According to Context Sensitive Solutions, we really are just identifying the problems to be solved and listening to the stakeholders, so we really don't have many solutions at this point.
I appreciate that and recognize that we are in the concept solution stage. Have you had any discussions with land, adjacent landowners along this project yet? Any of the stakeholders?
Yes, absolutely. We started with an open house in May. We have a mailing list of over 1,000 people, and we also have people signing up for an electronic newsletter update. And so we've had ongoing coordination. Our surveyors have knocked on doors, and we are starting an advisory committee, which will have its first meeting in January. And we also go to the community council meeting every month.
And will that advisory committee include stakeholders and AWU?
At this time, AWU is not on the advisory committee. It's primarily adjacent residence project stakeholders.
Would it be appropriate to ask AWU to participate in that type of situation?
They certainly are participating as an agency stakeholder, and we did have a specific meeting for agency stakeholders, and AWU has participated in that. In addition, we have been contacting them and have phone records to that, which I did not include in the concept report.
Okay. Do you have any other information or comments that you would like to make regarding this?
No, not at this time. I would like to note that the community council did send in a letter in support of the concept report that we've adequately identified the concerns to be addressed and to move forward.
Okay. I think Commissioner Pruez now has a question.
Thank you. I would, I'd just like to say I'd like you to encourage to make sure that the utility groups are involved with, with the stakeholders up there. Well, they are a stakeholder, but with the community councils and the user groups because, because it's pretty important that the infrastructure be a fundamental part of the planning process. It doesn't, doesn't, at some point, theory and reality are two different things. And so water, sewer, electric, power, gas, whatnot, the, those utility corridors and how, what the future is for that, how it's going to be disseminated throughout the hillside, especially down Rabbit Creek, I think is very important, and that that community that uses that road so much, that they, that they understand the requirements and the needs as, as it's being developed. So I would encourage you to include those folks into, into the community meetings that you have up there at the very beginning instead of coming in at the end.
Thank you for your comment, and they were included at the original agency stakeholder meeting, as were assembly representatives, state and House representatives.
Following up on that same line of thought, has, have you reviewed the AWU water and sewer plans for that area?
Yes, we have.
And what do they call for in general?
Um, I, I was not prepared to get into this much detail tonight since it was an information only item, so I don't have those plans in front of me. We talked to Joe Sangs at AWU, and at this time, they do not have plans to, to extend that, and the extensions are fairly limited in accordance with the Hillside District Plan. So we will continue to coordinate with them to ensure that as, as we move through this process, as you know, road planning can be a long process, and if things change, we will keep the dialogue open to make sure that we do coordinate and don't have to go back and rip up the road in two years to put in some extensions or fix some pipes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners regarding this information Seeing and hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is C3. It's an information item only, Case 2011-137. Context Sensitive Solutions Transportation Project Concept Report. Old Eagle River Road Upgrade, Monte Road to Baronoff Avenue. This is not a public hearing, and so there will be no public testimony on this matter. Do we have the petitioner or the petitioner's representative here?
Yes, Wendy is also representing in this project also.
Are there any initial questions from the commission regarding this matter? All right, and I do need you to identify yourselves again since this is a different case. Thank you very much.
My name is Wendy Wilber. I am with CRW Engineering, and I'm representing the municipality of Anchorage.
My name is Juan Lee. I'm also with CRW Engineering.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to, while we're identifying our packets, would you like to give us a little history of what you've done? Thank you.
Yes, again, we had an open house and site walk with the neighbors early in May to walk the project corridor. We'd actually flagged the right-of-way, walked the project corridor, and then held an open house on the same night. We had about 16 people attend that. In addition, we have put door hangers on all adjacent residences' homes so that they knew how to contact us. And again, we send out direct mailings and have e-newsletter updates. So we've, we've done quite a lot to, to keep these people informed. This project has become somewhat controversial. It's primarily one resident that, you will see that in your packet, you have a volume of comments. I believe there's 18 pages, and those 18 pages are from one resident. In addition to those, we've received five other comments on the project. This is a, again, looking at the problems to be solved. This is a collector roadway. There is, a typical collector would have two pedestrian facilities. What seems to be of concern is that second pedestrian facility on the west side. There's an existing one on the east side, and there are some residents on the west side opposed to a second facility. At this time, we are not proposing a second facility. We have no design. There are no decisions to be made. We know that we'll have to work through this process and resolve it. Some of the challenges is they would, the residents on the west side, some of them would not like to see any improvements on that side at all, and you went, had questions earlier about utilities. Well, there is an N-Star natural gas line on that side. There are drainage issues along this road that require storm drain, and we have water and sewer within the corridor. So it is a, it is a narrow corridor. There are separation requirements for water, sewer, and storm drain, and to expect all the improvements on half the road may be challenging, to say the least. So we are, we are trying to address all of the comments and balance the impacts. There are some very significant stands of spruce trees as well, and they're valued. A lot of them are in the right-of-way. Some of them are on private property, but as you know, tree roots don't know the difference between right-of-way and private property, and they're very large. So some of those roots may extend into underneath the roadbed, and so we're looking at ways to minimize that footprint and do what we can to protect the natural setting.
Are there questions from the commissioner, commissioners regarding this?
Well, I have a couple of questions. Are the existing utilities for water and sewer adequate for future development along this road?
I believe the water and sewer are adequate at this time. The N-Star natural gas line is very old. I believe it's 50 years old, and we have been talking to N-Star, and there may be some interest in upgrading that line. And they have actually talked about perhaps abandoning it in place because it does run under one of those significant stands of trees, so they've even considered abandoning the old line in place and constructing a new one to preserve those trees.
Okay. There's a comment in here, "Special design considerations applied to collectors in Chugyak Eagle River. Collectors are not expected to change substantially in character. Improvements will generally be limited to sidewalk improvements and upgrades from strip paved to municipal standards." So does that mean that there does not necessarily need to be a sidewalk or a trail on the west side of the road?
It would, according to collector standards, I believe it would require a design waiver from the municipal engineer. I think it's also important to note that this is adjacent to Eagle River Elementary School, and it is designated a safe walking route.
And according to the Anchorage Bicycle Plan 2010, bicycle network improvement projects are not identified for Old Eagle River Road, so the plan is not to have a bicycle trail?
I don't think we've got that far in the design, to be perfectly honest. There have been some comments requesting a bike lane. It would likely be a five-foot shoulder to accommodate bicycles on that. But again, with this new process, we're, we're very preliminary. We don't, we don't have any design alternatives, and we haven't started that.
Okay. I understand that there are considerable drainage issues in the area.
Yes, there are.
Can you expand on that for us, please?
The drainage issues primarily started with the, a new development that's off of Eagle River Road to the east, Hidden Hills, and that drainage is running across the road and flooding properties on the west side. And that was the primary impetus for the funding. It's a state grant funding the initial study. And it drains into ditches. The drainage problem is primarily during a melt or a chinook like we released, excuse me, like we recently had, and the culverts are frozen, the ditches are inadequate, they fill up, and the water flows over the street. And so we've had consensus from the public that they would like to see a pipe storm drain. That is one area that everyone agrees that that's the way to handle the drainage.
I believe Commissioner Wilson has a question.
Have you considered a turn lane, third lane?
I'm sorry?
A third lane?
A third lane?
Widening it, yes.
No, we have not. This would essentially have the same footprint in terms of lanes, two 11-foot lanes is what we would gather. There, a third lane would not be warranted.
I see on page, are there any other questions? Okay. I see on page 13 that there's a drinking water well. What would be the plan, that's in, that's in the right-of-way?
Yes. There are, I believe, three drinking water wells. One is within the right-of-way. We are working with that homeowner. We have, we talked to him on the phone. We've surveyed the well. We know exactly where it is. We will probably test that well before we begin any work to get a sense of the water quality and how it's doing, and then monitor it.
So the water well could remain in the right-of-way without a hookup to the public water that's in the road?
That will certainly be an issue we'll have to address with the property owner and with AWU.
Okay. And as I understand it, there may not be sufficient room for a piped storm drain system on the east side?
That is correct. In order to meet water and sewer separation distances, you can only put so many utilities on one side of the road.
So how do you solve that problem?
Uh, the pipe storm drain system would have to go on the west side of the road in the right-of-way. There is sufficient right-of-way to build a full collector, so we could certainly put the, the pipe storm drain on the west side.
Okay. I have another question. How many driveways are going to be affected by this improvement?
Uh, in total?
Uh-huh.
Uh, it's, it's in the concept report. I don't remember. Seven on the west side? Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one. And on the east side, we primarily, the access is primarily via side street intersections, so it looks like maybe we have one.
So can you brief us? Are there going to be slope issues for these driveways when this road is improved?
There are not significant slope issues. Some of the driveways on the west side sloped down just a little bit. The road was raised at one point. So certainly during design, we will make sure that we don't adversely impact these properties, and it may be necessary to raise or lower the rail, the road at, at certain points to make sure that they have a smooth transition and that we don't exasperate the drainage problem.
And what would be the ideal slope, in your opinion, for these driveways?
I would have to look at each driveway individually. Certainly, we would have to meet Muni standards. None of them exceed 10% or, or even close to it. So each driveway would be evaluated individually.
Okay. Commissioner Mulcahy has a, has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quick, a notice you've referenced, we've got four, I think, four different plans from Chugyak Eagle River. I understand they have some funding for some additional planning for that whole series of intersections right there as you get off the highway with Old Eagle River and Artillery and all that.
Yes.
So just please stay closely in tune as that progresses. We don't want to have to redo things.
Very much. It's one piece of the puzzle.
Okay. Are there any other comments from commissioners? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the information. We appreciate it. Moving on to item number D, the Consent Agenda Resolutions for Approval. May I have a motion? Right, I understand. Right. Items one through five. We have a motion for approval by Mr. Frederick and a second by Commissioner Wilson. This is a motion to approve the Consent Agenda item. Are there any items that the commissioners wish to pull? From the Consent Agenda item? I would make a request then to pull item 5A, Case 2011-134. Context Sensitive Solutions Transportation Project Draft Design Study Report. Campbell airstrip Road Upgrade, mile 0.3 to 0.7. This is not a public hearing item. I will need a second to pull this item? No, I don't. Okay. All right, I do not need a second to pull this item. May, I have a motion for approval for all of the other items which we have from Mr. Frederick and Mr. Wilson, so therefore, all of those other items are pulled, are approved. Is there any objection to pulling item, what? Are there any objections to approving the remainder of the Consent Agenda? Seeing and hearing none, that is approved. All right. In regards to item D5A, Case 2011-134, regarding the design study report for Campbell airstrip Road Upgrade. I see Ms. Ferguson is present. Would you like to give us a brief overview?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, Campbell airstrip Road is the only access for more than 100 residential homes within Stuckigan Heights neighborhood in addition to being the primary access to Far North Bicentennial Park. The length of the project that we're looking at tonight is just under four miles. There have been two parts of the road who, that were upgraded previously, and they're both north and south of this project. This project is just in the middle. And it had, this section, the middle section, has never been improved, but it links both of the previously upgraded sections. The Bashir Community Council and the Campbell airstrip Road Limited Service Area have identified the need to improve this section as their top priority for several years. It's unclear whether the wetlands boundary has been field verified for this project, so that is one condition that we're asking them to have that boundary verified. Also, the Rendezvous Trailhead Parking Lot will be removed and resources put into the improving, another trailhead nearby instead of the Rendezvous Trailhead. There are several issues regarding that one. One, if they were to improve it, would involve significant clearing of the vegetation and possible realignment of the existing dog mushing trail and the tunnel. So there was a meeting among the agency stockholders regarding what to do with the Rendezvous Trailhead Parking Lot, and it was decided to remove it. The project is identified in the Anchorage Bicycle Plan as having a proposed separated multi-use pathway and a proposed bike lane. The cross-section will consist of a 32-foot wide paved surface with two 11-foot wide travel lanes, five-foot asphalt shoulders that will also serve as the bike lanes, three-foot grass shoulders and drainage swales, and a separated 10-foot wide multi-use pathway along the west side of the project. No street lining will be added. That's all I have.
Are there questions or comments from the commissioners?
I have a question regarding the bike lane. You've recommended the bike lane shall be signed, marked, and striped in accordance with the approved Anchorage Bicycle Plan. Can you discuss the comments that have been made in the packet regarding a separation of less than 50 feet, up to 100 feet, that have been made regarding the visibility of the bike path to the road and all that sort of thing?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, if you all would turn to page 10 in your packet. There's a comment to Lori Skanky, who's the non, she's the trails coordinator. She had questioned the, having offset the trail, you know, 50 to 100 feet from the roadway, and her initial concerns would be that it would be in a wooded area, and there could be some safety concerns with either wildlife or other, other concerns. And so she had written those concerns, and then I called the engineer for the project at CRW, and we spoke about it, and he came back, and he also spoke to Ms. Skanky, and he sent this comment, which is on page 10, and he also included a photograph that shows what it would look like standing at about 50 feet off the edge of the road, and that would be, where he's standing is approximately where the trail would be, and so you're looking up and of course where the FedEx truck is, is the road. So it is pretty open for most of the length, so there is a great deal of visibility. So Ms. Skanky's concerns were alleviated once she spoke to Mr. Johnson at CRW.
So under these circumstances, then, are we talking about 100 feet between the trail and the road? Is that, is that my understanding?
Yes.
I have another comment, I guess, almost rather than a question, which is, I understand that there's the Bicentennial Park, there's the municipal gardens, there's a homeowners' association for Stuckigan Heights, there is heritage land- association for Stuck again Heights, there is Heritage Land Bank, all of whom are property owners in the immediate area. And yet, all the funding for this project is coming from the state. So is there ever any discussion regarding participation from some of these entities so that the municipality doesn't absorb all of its capital improvement budgets for roads, et cetera, for a project like this?
That's a question I may pass to Ms. Wilber to answer that sort of question. I'm not familiar with the funding for this project.
All right. Ms. Wilber, are you here again?
Hi again.
Please identify yourself once again for the record.
My name is Wendy Wilber with CRW Engineering. I'm representing the municipality of Anchorage. And I also have John Smith.
John Smith with the municipality project management engineering, working on this project. In answer to your question, the funding for this project is entirely a state grant, although the alignment segment that we're talking about is within ARDSA. So it is maintained by the city. But it's a, not a high priority road, other than to the community that uses the road. So they successfully secured a state grant, and we're moving forward and trying to implement the upgrade.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from commissioners?
I'm just curious, how does, Mr. Smith, how does the maintenance cost affected by this improvement?
It'll be very, what I would say is very minimal. I mean, they plow the road right now. It'll actually probably be less maintenance because it'll be a new asphalt surface. What's on there now is a chip sealed surface that has to be constantly patched and repaired.
And the bike trails?
Right. The actual maintenance of the bike trail, how that gets maintained, whether it's plowed or whether the Nordic Ski Club sets trail on that, that's really yet to be determined. But of course, there would be some maintenance with the trail. Correct?
Thanks.
Are there any other questions from commissioners?
Then I have a final question under the design challenges on page 59. The existing roadway generally runs along a slope bench with a high ridge. The function, and can you explain for the benefit of the commission, the definition or the design criteria of a country lane? Is this going to be a country lane, or is it going to be some other type of road, or is it going to be some sort of hybrid?
Well, the road is currently classified as a country lane in the official Streets and Highways Plan. That designation has not changed, and this project doesn't propose to change that designation. We've identified certain criteria such as park roads or for sort of a quasi-collector roadway that would appear to apply to this setting. And so that's where our criteria is coming from.
So the country lane road at 32 feet will be less than what would be a neighborhood road, for example, or in width?
It's going to be, I think, somewhat narrower. It will also not have lighting, which is different than a collector roadway. And that was unanimous by everybody who participated in the design. And we're doing what we can to maintain existing vegetation. It's very challenging because you have a slope down, it's flat, and you have a slope down. So we've minimized the widening of this road because it would have taken extensive fill to actually build the road up. So we've worked within the constraints of the existing conditions.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
In this situation, I do believe that we need a recommendation. The division recommends approval of the draft design study report for Campbell airstrip road upgrade, subject to the following conditions. So I do believe we need a motion. Commissioner Parks, motion to approve, seconded by Stacy Dean. Is there any objection? Are there any additional comments for the record? Okay, that motion is approved. Thank you very much. All right. Under item E, unfinished business and actions of public hearings, we have no unfinished business, so we will move into item number F, the regular agenda. We have no regular agenda items, and that takes us to the public hearing portion of the meeting. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is, one, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Item number two, persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. A, petitioners, including all his/her representatives, 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. B, representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, 5 minutes. C, individuals, 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. Item number four, an individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. Five, any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. The public hearing is now open for case number 2011-117. We will hear from staff first, and then we will open the public hearing. May we hear from staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Late comments were received from the Russian Jack Community Council stating that they unanimously support this utility substation conditional use. Those are in the separate stapled sheets. The department did not receive any negative comments from the public about this case. The department finds that the four general standards of approval for a conditional use are met with the proposed site plan. There are no specific conditional use standards for utility substations in our code. The site layout, the proposed landscaping, the lighting, the architecture of the building have all attempted to blend this site and its development into the R4 multifamily residential district where it is located within. I wanted to, or there are a few errors in the staff report that the petitioner asked me to correct for the record. On page four of the report, the report says that there's a wooden fence that will be surrounded by a, I'm sorry, there's a, the fuel tanks will be surrounded by a wooden fence. It should have stated that the fuel tanks and the generators will be surrounded by this fence. On the same page in the report, the report says that only one person will be working at the site, but it should have said that usually one person will be working at the site because if there is an event or equipment needs repair, then there would be more workers present at that time. A little further down on that page, the report says that the site is on well and septic, but in fact, it's served by public water and sewer. Finally, in the conditions on page five, condition number four, the word "Mullians" is misspelled. It says "Millions," but it should say "Mullians," so the "I" should be changed to "U." And I think that might have just been a spell check issue because it's not a word found in a spell check. Finally, the department recommends approval of this conditional use, subject to conditions one through five, on page five of the staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and the petitioner has prepared a presentation as well, and GCI is present with their representative. Thanks.
Do the commissioners have any questions of staff? If not, we'll hear from the petitioner's representative. Would you please step forward?
Hi, I'm Michelle Ritter with Dalhke KM. With me this evening is Tim Potter, also with Dalhke KM, and Scott Standard from GCI. As Frances indicated, this is a utility substation. It's allowed, in the allowed conditional use in the R4 zoning district. The project has been designed with regards to the residences adjacent to the project site. GCI has worked extensively with the neighbors and the community council to make sure that this project fits seamlessly into the community. As Frances noted, there will be an onsite emergency generator only anticipated to be in operation during emergency. However, there will need to be weekly, possibly just monthly, testing to ensure that the fuel isn't stagnant and that the generator is working properly. So GCI did work with the closest neighbor to the west to ensure the proper testing times. And so their preference was around their dinnertime, which is about 5:30, which also corresponds with rush hour. So this is at the corner of Pine Street and DeBar. So it's anticipated that if there are any noises, that it'll be drowned out by the traffic as well. The generator will be at least 20 feet from the property and in a noise attenuated box with the eight-foot screen. They've also, GCI has also gone to the Russian Jack Community Council on two different occasions. They brought the initial concept plan to them. They voted unanimously in support. Further along in design, there were some, a few changes for security and maintenance that involved a materials change and some landscaping change. And the building moved nine feet to accommodate a nine-foot public use easement along Pine Street. So we also went back to the community council and showed them those revisions, and they again voted unanimously to support the project. As Frances mentioned, there will be typically about one person that comes onsite during working hours. In the beginning, it's anticipated that it will be more frequently. It could be less than every single day as the site's up and in operation. So it won't be generating a lot of traffic, and it's just anticipated that it will blend in well with the community. And we've read the conditions of approval, and we accept them as they're prepared. And I'd like to save the rest of my time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dean, you have a question or comment?
I do, thank you. I have a question of the petitioner. I know that you've probably been a lot through process to notify the public and have meetings. Could you please let us know when those meetings were held and how the public was notified?
Well, the public was notified through the municipal's typical way of sending out a mailer to the residences, I think 15 days in advance. We also posted the site on all the right of ways, including Camilla, which is where the site will be given access. And then we were at both the October and December Russian Jack Community Councils.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Prus.
Thank you. On the site plan, I see where it shows two concrete pads, one that says standby generator, and then it says fuel tank, not plural. And you talked about tanks and multiple generators. Is that a change?
This is a two-phase development. And so the first phase is about 2,400 square feet, and then there'll be an additional 12,000 square feet. And originally, it was intended that there would be one generator and one fuel tank coming online with the first phase. However, they've decided, then a second generator and fuel tank would be added with the second phase. However, they've revisited that, and they're just going to do one fuel tank and generator that would accommodate the full buildout of the site. So it'll just be one fuel tank and one generator.
Okay, so there's not two?
Correct.
And what is the size of the generator, and what is the size of the fuel tank?
I would like GCI to, I think they'd be better to see to answer that question.
The original...
I have your name, sir.
Oh, pardon me, Scott Standard with GCI. The original building will be 2,500 square foot, and the original generator will be 500 KW and 3,000 gallons of standby fuel, which will allow us to operate for three days in an emergency with no need for a fuel truck.
So the 3,000 gallon fuel tank, I assume it's double walled and whatnot? It's a double walled tank?
It's a double walled tank. It has alarm systems to notify us if there's any leaks into that double wall system.
Okay.
It's all self-contained. It's above ground.
And then what type of decibel will the 500 KW generator?
Below 70 dB.
Okay. And is that at the, is that at the property line? Is that, or is that at the?
That's at the 20-foot between our generator and the property line would be below 70 dB, and we are as well adding a screening in between those two locations.
So would you anticipate it to be at the property line?
I can't answer that. But below 70.
And we will work with the HHS to ensure that if it is over the allowable 60 decibels, that GCI will apply for an annual noise permit.
Okay, and the access to that for the fuel and the service of the generator, will the access be a paved driveway off a road, or how does that, how's that set up? How are you setting that up?
It'll be, it'll be from our driveway and parking lot.
Which are paved.
I was trying to see the relationship, how that...
It'll be remote. It'll be a remote repair.
The generators are located here, and our parking lot is here, and there'll be an opening in between.
And will that be paved in between?
This portion is not designed to be paved.
Oh, I just curious for a fuel truck, trying to get a fuel truck in there, all 3,000.
Generally, creating a fuel truck would park out there and take a hose into there, like filling a fuel oil tank at home.
All right. And the fuel tank is first, and the generator is second?
Excuse me, could I ask you to bring that diagram over closer to the mic so that you'll be able to be recorded? Yes, please. Thank you. And if you could then speak into the mic, that would be most helpful.
All right.
Thank you.
The fuel tank will be closer to the access point here.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the, for the petitioner? Okay?
Thank you.
We have eight minutes and 22 seconds remainder. The public hearing is now open on case 2011-117. If you wish to have testimony, would you please come forward? Is there anyone here who wishes to testify on the conditional use for 2011-117? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, the public portion is now closed. And do we have any other further comments from petitioner? Okay. A motion, Mr. Parks.
In the case 2011-17, zoning conditional use for utility substation located as conditional, its location is a conditional use to allow utility substation be built at Pine on south of Camille. I make a motion that we approve with the terms and conditions that the, is written in the staff report on page five outlining the department recommendations.
Thank you. And that motion has been seconded by, that motion has been seconded by Mr. Fredericks and with the correction of Mullians instead of Millions. Okay? All right. Are there any comments from commissioners before we vote? I have one comment. Mr. Frederick.
I would just like to put a finding on the record that the application for conditional use permit meets the four standards. use permit meets the four standards for conditional use approval.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments?
Well, I have one minor comment that I would like to make, and that is, it concerns me whenever we have a commercial application on a high-density multifamily site. I recall the Walgreens situation off of Huffman Road, and more recently, another case where the petitioner on the east side of town was able to change their density to an RO zone with the intent, obviously, of building offices. I believe there is in-process housing report that will indicate that Anchorage has a housing shortage and a lack of residential property for future development of housing, and it concerns me every time we have one of these cases put forward without at least some opportunity for compensation as a property is put into a conditional use or upzoned. I will be voting in favor of the motion, but not always, but in this particular case I shall. Thank you.
See, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing any objections? This motion is approved. All right, we are now moving on to those items for which I believe the majority or all of you in the audience are here to participate in, and I welcome your comments and participation. The public hearing is, this is G1, case 2011-1, I'm sorry. This is case 2011-130, the Anchorage Gospel Mission. It's a rezoning to PLI public lands and institutions. Mr. Parks?
Madam Chair, I have a motion that we consolidate case number 2011-130, case number 2011-131, and case number 2011-132. They're a matter that is substantially the same, and I would ask that we allow each of the individuals five minutes to testify on these three cases. A group would have eight minutes, and the petitioner, petitioner was have 15 minutes on these cases.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Wilson, for that second. Is there any discussion amongst the commissioners regarding the motion? Mr. Pruse.
Now, what the staff, I'm just kind of curious what the staff comments on that, on this motion is.
Through the chair, Mr. Pruse. This is the typical way of handling two cases that are running concurrently. The only important thing for the commission to remember is that they make separate motions for each of the requests, and there are three requests here.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments, questions regarding this procedure? All right, seeing and hearing none, that motion is approved. Cases 2011-130, 2011-131, case 2011-132 will be heard concurrently. May we hear from staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Late comments were received from the public for all three cases. The department has copied the, all of the comments and added them to all three of the cases. Therefore, if one has read the comments for one of the cases, they've read the public comments for all of the cases. We just want to make sure everybody was heard, no one would be missing. They're all in the same order, so forth. There were comments both for and against the rezone and the conditional uses. The Campbell Creek and University area community councils have provided comments in support of all three cases. The department finds that the requested rezone from B3 to R3, B3 and R3 to PLI conforms to the UMED plan, which identifies this area, the entire block is residential, and the proposed conditional uses are a special type of residential. Also, the rezone to PLI meets the four standards of approval for a rezone. The petitioner requests a habilitative care conditional use. They would like to add a 30-person adult addiction recovery program to their facility. The homeless shelter already exists there, and there's no change proposed for that use. The petitioner has a homeless shelter conditional use. They rely, rather than have a conditional use, they rely on non-conforming rights because of the history of controversy related to the homeless shelter. They wanted to sort of be above board and make sure that the public was aware that along with the rezone, there is a homeless shelter there. They're seeking it to be, not to rely on the sort of de facto site plan that it has, the de facto conditional use. Instead, provide us a site plan, and they'll be held to for a conditional use instead of the letter that appears in your packet, the, the letter finding that it's a de facto conditional use. In conclusion, the department recommends approval for the rezone to PLI. A draft ordinance for the assembly to approve is included in the packet behind the staff report. The department also recommends approval for both conditional uses, subject to the conditions in those reports. The conditions of approval are pretty standard, they're standard. I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of these reports, or go through the conditions of approval, the petitioners in the audience, to respond to questions as well.
Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, my question is of staff. From what I understand, looking at page 14, that this would be considered a spot rezone. There is no other PLI land adjoining this particular rezone. Is that correct? Is this not a spot rezone?
This is not a, a spot rezone, through the chair, Ms. Dean. This is an important point in, in this. I'm, I'm happy that you raised it. For a rezoning to occur, one must have 1.75 acres or be adjoining a similar zone district, the same zoning that they're rezoning to. In this case, the, the three, the four B3 properties are a little over an acre, but once you add in the two R4 properties...
R3, I think?
Is it R3? Yep, the two R3 properties, then it's at 1.85 acres, so greater than what's the minimum required for a rezone. The, all the properties within the petition site for the rezone are owned by the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission. It's my understanding that they didn't necessarily seek to add those R3 properties to the rezoning request, but were forced to because of the requirement to have 1.75 acres in the case of a rezone.
Are there any other questions of staff? To staff? Mr. Pruse?
Yeah, based on some of the things I've been reading, is there any, do you have any information on police reports or call-outs to the area?
Police reports to the area?
Any, any calls to the area, a number of calls to the facility or the area for, for the occupants?
I apologize, Mr. Pruse. It's an excellent question. This case was not routed to the police department. Even if it had been, they typically don't comment on cases. I have no information on police complaints or police calls to the subject property or the surrounding area.
Other questions of staff at this time? May we hear from the petitioner? Please state your name. If it's more than one syllable, would you please spell it? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Gregory Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R. I'm with Davis Wright Tremaine. I've been working with the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission for, I guess, maybe four or five years now in a pro bono capacity. So this has been a long road, but even before me, I think it's been almost 25 years getting here and trying to get things right. So I wanted to thank the commission first, and thank the staff, and thank everybody from the public who's here to speak either for or against these recommendations. The history here is that the mission initially was downtown. It moved to its present location in 1987. In 1992, it was deemed a legal non-conforming use, and it's held that same status since then. It is in an area zone B3, and of course, with the structure and the condition it's in, it would risk losing its legal non-conforming use if it ever, say, for example, suffered flooding from pipes freezing, or fire damage, or anything of that nature, if there had to be substantial repair work done. So that was the first aspect to this problem. A more significant aspect, I believe, was repairing community relations, and that's been something that for initially, the mission personnel will tell you, they probably did not do a very good job at when they moved to the location in 1987. In the last handful of years, the Reverend David Williams, who will speak to the commission tonight, and Frank Thomas Mears, who's an insurance adjuster, risk manager, but a volunteer with the mission, he's here tonight as well. They have worked closely with the University area community council, also with the Campbell Park Community Council, and other neighboring businesses and neighbors as well, attempting to reach out to people, explain more about what the mission is about, what they do, what they don't do, and trying to repair relations. I believe they've done so successfully. The purpose behind the rezoning is to allow what is now a legal non-conforming use to secure a full status under the law, so that if it gets rezoned, the properties from B3 to PLI, then the, the conditional use permit, which right now is a de facto conditional use permit, we can apply for a homeless shelter on the one part. And let me address that briefly. It was explained to me by Ms. Chambers and Mr. McLaughlin from Planning that we might not even have to do that, that it, that with a de facto permit, if the commission favorably voted on the rezoning application, that we would automatically be, have a status of a conditional use permit for a homeless shelter conferred. But the mission wanted full transparency as part of its ongoing efforts to reach out to the community, wanted an opportunity to get as many comments as it could, and so for that purpose, sought the conditional use permit that's before the commission tonight as part of this packet, so to speak. The third part of the, of the packet is the conditional use permit for habilitative care facility, and that's for the New Life Disciple Program. And we have some of those men who've participated in that program here tonight, both those who've participated in the past and who have successfully re-entered society as productive members, and also some members who are currently in the New Life Disciple Program as well. It is an intensive two-year program. Currently, those individuals live in the homeless shelter itself. If the rezoning and the conditional use permits are approved, then they will be moving next door to the Tupperware Building, which is on Priest Lot 3, and, and that will free up additional space, although it's not, it will free up the space that they had occupied in the shelter, but the shelter itself will not be expanding. So therefore, there will be some additional bed space for the homeless and the disadvantaged in the community, which the mission has been about for many, many long years now. I would like to, subject to the commission's pleasure, if there are no questions, I would like to save the balance of my time for rebuttal, but by way of preview for the testimony that you'll hear from different members of the community tonight, what we've asked those who are speaking on behalf of the commission, correction, of the mission, we've asked them to perhaps designate individuals. So for example, there are a number of men here who have successfully graduated from the New Life Disciple Program. Rather than have all of them come and talk to the commission, there's going to be one individual who'll speak for all of them, but when that person comes to speak, he'll ask his colleagues to stand, and thereby, we're hoping we can save the commission a little bit of time. We also have, I believe, is Mr. Little here? We have a student, Mr. Pruse, from the University of Alaska who's done a crime mapping study. And I, I can tell you anecdotally, it's my impression that the mission has excellent relations with the police department, but it's difficult to get quantified information in that respect. Mr. Little is a student at the University of Alaska Anchorage. He's actually done a crime mapping study, and time and interest being available, I'm hoping he'll have a chance to talk a little bit with the commission about what he found and about his conclusions and recommendations with respect to where the mission is currently located. We would ask the commission to favorably approve all three pending applications, the rezoning and the two conditional use permits. All three have been, have been recommended for approval by the planning department, and for the reasons specified by the planning department, we would ask the, the commission to approve all three. Madam Chair, or commission members, are there any questions?
I believe Ms. Dean has a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Through the chair, on Woolcott subdivision lots 1 and 9, on page 12, what are the uses of those buildings?
Woolcott 1 is a fourplex, is it, Mr. Williams? Is a fourplex residential, and Woolcott 9 is a storage shed right now.
How long, how long have you owned those particular lots?
Mr. Williams, how long is? I'm going to ask Mr. Williams from the mission to, to join me. He might be able to more particularly answer how long the mission, how long, the question was, how long has the mission owned?
David Williams, program director for the Rescue Mission. The mission has owned those properties for approximately eight years.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of the petitioners representative at this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to reserve the balance of my time.
Yes, you have eight minutes and five seconds. Thank you. This is the opportunity where we have to hear from the public. Briefly, could I have a show of hands of those of you that are planning on testifying? Okay, thank you. In the hopes of saving time, if you're sitting in the back of the assembly chambers, if I could ask you to move down to the front, that would expedite things. We really would appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, and who is first to testify? Would you please come forward, state your name clearly, and spell it if necessary? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Scott Dufour. It's D-U-F-O-U-R. I'm a clinical application specialist with Alaska Native Tribal Health Consortium, and what I want to testify is on behalf of the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission. In 2000, in May 2000, I joined the New Life Program, and I went through the program. During that time was a year-long program. At May 2001, I graduated from the program, and I continued, excuse me, I continued working with the Anchorage Gospel Mission until 2006. And at that time, I applied for a position at the Alaska Native Medical Center, and currently been there, working there for five years. I know that the program has been really successful in my life. It's really opened up my eyes to see the things I had missed out for the previous years of my life, and, and I'm just really grateful for everything that they have done for me during this time. I continue working hard every day to make a difference in my life, and my children, and my wife, and, and I just want to say, I want to thank you for the opportunity for me to be able to speak on behalf of the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission. be able to speak on behalf of the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you very much for your testimony. All right. Please come forward for anyone else who would like to testify.
Good evening. My name is Rodman Maddox. I'm here speaking on behalf of the New Life Development Program and all the overnight guests we serve. We come from all different walks of life, homeless, helpless, broken down, from drug and alcohol abuse. For most of us, there was no other place to turn. The Mission has helped us become meaningful members of society again. Due to the economic and the rise in people becoming homeless, there is a drastic need for beds and more service in Anchorage. By supporting the rezoning, this will enable us to better serve the community. Me personally, I reside as a disciple at the Rescue Mission. It has truly dramatically changed my life, given me and helping me understand my God-given purpose in life, to be a service to others. It has been a blessing to be there. No one knows what tomorrow will bring, and I just pray that each and every day, we have shelter, homes, beds, and all the resources that we need available for us, and I want to thank you. God bless you. Amen.
Thank you for your testimony. The next person, please come forward.
Hi, David Williams. I'm the Program Director. If it would be okay, Madam Chair, could I have, in behalf of Scotty, all the former programmers raise their hand, please? And then on behalf of Mr. Dixon, could I have all the current program men raise their hand, please? The Anchorage Gospel, go ahead.
Thank you.
The Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission has a very strict no-tolerance policy. Anyone coming onto our property to use our services has to blow three zeros and a breathalyzer. If they can't pass that breathalyzer, then they're asked to leave our property until they can come back 24 hours later. We've worked very closely with the community and the community councils in order to rein in any miscreant behavior in the community, where the Rescue Mission has made great strides in my time there, as well as before me, to work closely with the community and make sure that behaviors are, we're an accountability shelter, is what we are. We believe that men have the power to change their behavior, and we do so through a spiritual means of guidance and accountability. So I would ask that you favorably consider this resolution for the Anchorage Rescue Mission. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would, excuse me, Mr. Williams, if you'll stay put, please. We do have some questions for you.
Okay.
Commissioner Fredericks?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Fisher made the observation or statement that perhaps early on in your association with the surrounding community, that you perhaps weren't as sensitive to some of the impacts that your facility had and have worked to improve those results. Could you describe some of the things that you've done to lessen the impact of your facility on those surrounding residents?
You know, when our current executive director first came to the Mission, he found a situation that was not good. There was very little funds, no food. It was really just a glorified flop house. So he really had to put all of his attention into creating this organization that works and is effective for the homeless of our community. The next generation coming in has the luxury to then focus in the community and take care of some of the things we've had to unregretfully neglect. So what we've done is we've come in and we've made sure that anyone using our services clearly understands that behavior anywhere in the area is not, has to be above board. It has to be in compliance with just the common decency and the way our society is laid out to behave. If you urinate on someone's fence, we consider that urinating on our fence, and there's consequences. We're all choice-driven. We've given, been given free will, and we have to be good stewards of that, and that's what we're teaching these men and women who come to the Rescue Mission, is to make better choices in life, and justice dictates, if you make bad choices, then you reap the rewards of those choices, which are often negative consequences, and not being able to use our services. We always give them a chance to change their behavior. So the suspensions of our services are, they go from, can range from one week to one year. We've even had a few that have, unfortunately, the consequences of their behavior have been lifelong suspensions of our services. Because of that, the people who come to the Rescue Mission know that they have choices to make. They can either have that drink today, or they can come and have that meal with us. They can either misbehave at a business across the street, or they can come and stay at our shelter, and they're really starting to make really good choices. The incidences, and the number of incidences have dropped just dramatically since we've instituted those no-tolerance policies.
Mr. Frederick, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you. How do you, how do you interface with the police?
We have a really good relationship with the police. What we do is if there is a problem with an individual, rather than call the police, we kind of, we kind of make a fake call. We'll get on the phone and we'll tell, we'll go through the procedure that you would normally go through if you called 911. We tell them what our name is, what the person's doing, what they're dressed, and generally, when you start talking about what they're wearing, they take off. So we really don't call the police very often. That is an absolute last resort. We try to deal with everything internally. Generally, if you see a police car there, they're dropping somebody off who needs services.
There, there, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go right ahead.
There were more than one comment in our, in our packet from the public, that there still are incidences in the neighborhoods surrounding your facility, and, you know, I understand that we're dealing with human beings here, and there's a lack of absolute control in a free society, but do you get complaints over the phone or in person on any kind of a regular basis, and tell me how you, how you deal with them?
You know, the, the community's concerns are real, and they're valid, and we certainly never minimize that. We get a lot less calls, but when we do get a call, if that person can help us identify the individual, I cannot guarantee them that no one will sleep under their, on their stairwell, or no one will throw trash in their yard, but I can certainly guarantee them that that individual will have no legitimate reason to be at the Rescue Mission or even in the area. So we take every call seriously, and when someone calls, I oftentimes personally go and address the problem right then. We do not wait.
Thanks.
Commissioner Pruse?
Thank you, through the chair. I have a series of questions on that line about candidates that come and actually fail admittance. What, is there any follow-up? Do you, where do they go when they leave your facility? What do they, how do they get there? What do they do? Are they there the next day? Do they go very far away? Does the surrounding community deal with them until they come back 24 hours later to take the breathalyzer test? Just in your experience, what do you, what do you encounter and see?
Yes, sir. When we first really started getting aggressive, when we had that luxury, we, we had a lot of people staggering away from the Mission, and so we really, we didn't want to put that burden on the community, certainly. So what we would do, we would encourage them to get the bus, and if we had available bus tokens, we would give them bus tokens so they could get out of the area. Now, they know that they, they don't even try. They know that they're not going to get in, that it's not even an option, so rarely do you see anyone intoxicated coming to or from the Rescue Mission, because they know it's futile. There's someone stationed at the door. You cannot walk in the door without blowing in that breathalyzer, and they don't even try anymore.
So, so what percentage would you say now, I mean, you talked before versus now, can you give me a timeframe? How long ago it was where, where they barely had anything to eat, and it was more of a flop house to today, and then what percentage passes today versus back then, and what that timeframe is?
You know, when we first instituted these policies, we were probably turning away 10, 15 people a day. Now, I would be surprised if we turned one a week away.
How long ago was this?
Two years ago is when we instituted the policy of no tolerance.
So does your, does your association have any proactive group to, or policy to take and go out daily in your surrounding community to look and see what's going on with the, with the neighbors, or if there are folks that may want to come into your facility but aren't quite, aren't quite prepared yet to do that? What, what, what's going on there?
Well, what we do is we, we have adopted one local park, and we patrol that regularly, and we keep the park clean, and we, even in the wintertime, we shovel the park because it's across the street from the Horizon House, and there's elderly disabled people who enjoy using that, so we try to make it available throughout the winter. We also send out groups to Campbell Creek Park around the fish viewing platform to clean up in the area there, and I'm personally a member of TBOP, Take Back Our Park, which is a local community group that is involved with behaviors of homeless in park. We're active members of three community councils. We really push aggressively to communicate with anyone in the, in the community, and we've never turned away a phone call, certainly.
And last, I may, question is, is one of the, one of the requests before us is for you to actually increase the capacity, either de facto or not, I mean, I guess depending on how we, how we, you know, you're above board. Currently, the facility holds how many, and what would you, are you trying to go to, and what would you do different with the more people that would be there?
Well, the, there's never really been anything on paper in my tenure here with the Rescue Mission, but there's been a general consensus that the number is 100 people. We have room for 100 people. Really, what we're doing, we're not increasing the numbers, we're just splitting. When we found out that we were in non-compliance in the Tupperware Building, we certainly shut everything down immediately, and we had to move the New Life into the homeless shelter section, and New Life being residential required more space, so we actually lost a chunk of overnight homeless beds. And what we're doing here is we're essentially just going back to where we were, so we're not increasing in numbers. In fact, we're probably going to be even, we're going to, rather than increase the 30 beds, in which we hoped, we made an agreement with the community that we would only agree or include a certain amount of beds in there, and we're actually going to go a little lower than that, so we're going to add 20, or reclaim 20 beds, so we're really not adding anything. In reality, if you look at the numbers, we're staying exactly the same. We're just splitting them up differently within the organization.
Thank you.
Through the chair, how often do you personally walk through Campbell Creek Park and go through the camps?
We have one employee that walks through Campbell Creek Park twice a day.
But you personally, how often do you?
Me personally, I wished I had the time to do it every day, but I, you know, I'm also in charge of the New Life Discipleship Training Program and numerous other duties there, so we assign people within the organization to do that.
How often do you personally walk through that park?
I personally walk through that park maybe four times a year.
Okay. And then, when you have walked through those four times a year, how often do you see people that are at your homeless shelter also in the, in the camps, too?
Probably every time. You know, I've gone over there to help clean the park up, and the people hang out there.
So it's the same people at your shelter as in the people?
Well, if they're hanging out there and they're drinking and they're causing a public nuisance, they don't have privileges at our shelter. And one of the things our rules have really shown us is that they're going to be there, there's people who hang out at that park that have not had privileges at the Rescue Mission for six to eight months, but they're still in the area, and they're still hanging out at the park. They're not allowed on our property.
Thank you. Also, the homeless beds that you have, how many homeless beds do you have?
Currently, right now, we have beds for 40, 40 single men, 10, 30, 40, 30 single men, 10 single women, and the rest are in New Life, taken by New Life.
Do you have children at your facility?
No, ma'am. We are an unaccompanied adult shelter. We don't have the space for children.
And then, now, the New Life facility is a separate facility. They, they are also housed there? Are they kept with the same group? Is it as separate?
It's a program within the, all the Rescue Missions nationwide have some type of program that tries to help men change their condition from homelessness to productive members of society. The biggest majority of the numbers of New Life, and every, every Mission names their program something different. Ours is named New Life. The biggest majority, I would say at least 85, 90% of the men who are in New Life have been harvested from the homeless community who come and use our services, and they then see the changes in these men's lives, and then they get interested, and then talk to me and get into New Life, and try to make that significant change from homelessness to, to a productive member of society. I will tell you this also, panhandling anywhere within a one-mile radius of the Rescue Mission excludes you from our services. The people who panhandle generally don't come to the Mission. They're probably making more money than I'm making.
Thank you.
I did have one question, kind of a follow-up. How many people do you have involved in the New Life Program? You've said you've got 40 people for our 40 single men beds and 10 single women beds. Is that inclusive of the New Life Program? Or is it?
No, sir. We, right now, currently have 20 men in New Life. Those numbers generally fluctuate, and the holidays are a really difficult time for everybody, so a lot of people leave the program, unfortunately, during the holidays, but we, and we always try to give them multiple chances through that. That's a very difficult process to get through.
And the New Life Program is also a housing program? They actually live on the property?
Yes, sir. I mean, the vast majority are homeless. They're, they're from the homeless community.
Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you for your testimony. I have had the opportunity to observe some of the services you provide, and I'm very impressed. How broad is your, the region that you serve? In other words, and one step before that is, you said you moved from downtown before your time to the current location. Why did they move, and how big is the service area that you currently serve?
You know, I can't speak intelligently on the particulars of why we, why we moved. I know that it was, and I believe, and certainly leave room for me to be corrected, I believe it was an eminent domain situation where the property was needed for something else, and so we were then relocated to our current property. As far as, you know, the homeless community, all the shelters are certainly Brother Francis' Beans Cafe. There seems to be this general group of men who go, and women, who go from one shelter to the other. So I would say we serve the Anchorage Bowl, quite frankly. What we try to do is we really try to identify those who are trapped in that cycle and remove them from the cycle. So, you know, to answer your question would be, we serve the homeless community in Anchorage as a whole.
And how do they, how do folks move between those, those very distant locations? I mean, down Beans Cafe downtown, and yours is out on Tudor Road. Do they take the bus, or do they walk?
The biggest majority are travel by bus, but I would like to point out that we cater toward the working homeless. Out of those 30 beds that are available to the general population males each night, we have a program where if you're working, and we have on file at the Rescue Mission a letter from your employer on their letterhead, then you're allowed to then you're allowed to call in for your bed rather than come stand in line. At the end of the call-in period, which is from 2 to 3 o'clock, at the end of the call-in period, on an average night, we might have five beds available. On a good night, seven. So when you see those people coming, what they're vying for is one of those five to seven beds. So we really cater to those who are trying to change their condition from what they are to what they could be or what they should be. So, you know, generally the traffic you have coming in is from the bus traffic. Or if it's late traffic, it's from those who have been working and are coming in for their bed.
And one more question. What is your sense of the community that's within, say, half a mile or a mile? How they generally view the shelter? And I know you've talked about what you do to reach out and help clean up the parks and monitor things. But what's your sense of their view?
I think when I first started working with them or when we first started working, I certainly don't want to take, you know, credit here where credit's not due. I represent the rescue mission leadership. When we started working with the community, it was very hostile and rightfully so. I mean, all their concerns were valid. You know, what they were telling us was happening. And it wasn't that we were indifferent. It was unfortunately at the time, we didn't have that luxury. So as opposed to what it was when we started, very hostile. As to right now, I think it's very, very good. You're still going to have one or two, you know, that you're, that no matter what, how you try to work with them, are not going to be satisfied. And that's okay. That helps us because as long as we have someone who has given us the different view, then we have room for improvement. So we value their opinion and what's going on. But I think overall, our community relations are really good right now.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. We've kept you at the podium a long time. You may sit down. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify at this time? Please come forward.
My name is Michael Sipple. I'm here to testify in support of the mission. I represent all the staff members. And if I can get all the staff members to raise their hand, please. One of the reasons I'm in support of the mission is, one, is I believe it saves lives. Two, as staff members at the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission, we have the wonderful opportunity to witness many lives impacted at the mission. Because every man and woman who walk through the mission doors are given a message of hope. They're required to actually sit through the service. So every night, a message of hope is taught. They're taught lessons that enable them to become productive members of society, productive fathers, protective husbands and pillars in their community. It's a requirement of the mission. And also another reason that I'm in support of the mission is almost three years ago, I walked through the doors of the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission, hopelessly addicted to drugs, hopelessly addicted to alcohol, very depressed, suicidal. And currently, I serve as chaplain there at the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission. And, you know, I am, I have the ability now to give back to society. I have my own department. I pay my bills. You know, I see myself and the rest of the staff members here as productive members of society. So the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission and the New Life program works. The majority of the hands that were raised today as our staff have gone through the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission doors and have received the services that they offer. So I really would pray you would consider that when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? I would like, thank you, you may sit down. For clarification's sake, I would like to state that if you are a staff member of the mission, then you are in essence sort of representing the petitioner. And so I would ask at this time that you, that additional staff members refrain from offering public testimony. That does not include, however, past members of the rescue mission who have gone through the program and are now testifying as individuals. So if there is anyone else who would like to testify on this case, on the cases before us tonight, please come forward. Thank you.
Patrick Littleman, UAA. I just happen to be conducting research and to answer some of the questions that I've heard tonight. I studied this particular shelter as one of four between the months of March and, between the months of March and August. There were 166 reported crimes in that five-month period. Of the four shelters that I did study, Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission had 60% fewer crimes committed in that half-mile radius than any of the other three. I conducted a community outreach survey, door-to-door, at each of the shelters. And reference to Anchorage Gospel, I posed over 20 questions to several households, employees, locals, stakeholders within that half-mile radius. And I got 81% supportive answers, to a strong degree, in support of the shelter and its function within the community as a homeless shelter and rehabilitative program. The Gospel Rescue Mission was observably the most controlled. I visited several. And the program and the rule-setting and the implementation and the policies at Anchorage Gospel prevented any customers of the Gospel Rescue Mission from sitting or lying or sort of congregating. They're all active, what I observed, and employed at the mission. Did you have a question, ma'am? Okay. I have no stake in this. I just wanted to present the information that I had, having conducted some research coincidentally in time for this meeting.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there questions from the commission? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Please come forward.
My name is Mike Miller. I'm an elder at the Baxter Road Bible Church. And for over 30 years, our church has supported the rescue mission with a small financial gift each month. I understand most of the financial support comes from individuals in the community. But related to that, I would like to point out that the rescue mission receives no government funds, whatever, from any of the authorities, as far as I know. And so the rescue mission provides a valuable service in helping the poor and homeless and people with overwhelming problems in their lives at no cost to the federal, state, or municipal governments.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you for your testimony. Would the next person please come forward that wishes to testify?
I'm really scared. If I could be like a business representative, my name is Kit Ayers. I'm a licensed massage therapist and I work on 42nd and Fulker. So we're right behind pretty much the Anchorage Gospel Mission and right adjacent to the park, the Campbell Park over there that Mr. Williams was talking about. And we view the Anchorage Gospel Mission very positively. We respond with rations and kind, the business does. We're impressed by how clean it is, how courteous the people are. And just going from like a six-month period to 12-month period, seeing the changes in the people, the gentlemen who are in the New Life program is just really, really impressive. So I can't speak for all the businesses, but, you know, for our physical therapy clinic, Alaska Health Quest, since we are right there, it's been very positive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just one minute. Are there any questions of the, any testimony? Can you be very specific about where your, the business is in relationship to the rescue mission? North, south, east, west, adjacent, next door?
I would kind of say we're behind the McDonald's and Subway. So we, I would have to say we're behind them. We travel there all the time. I don't see any loitering. It's very clean. They conduct themselves in a gentlemanly manner. When I drop off my rations and kind, they're always out to help get me, get the supplies out of the vehicles. And they're just very well-mannered at all times.
Thank you very much. But we do have a question for you, Commissioner Parks.
How long have you lived in that neighborhood?
I actually don't live in that neighborhood. I worked there and I've worked there for two years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Would the next person who wishes to testify, please come forward.
My name is Jack Mandar, M-A-N-D-E-R. And I guess I get to be the first person who testifies against the expansion of the shelter. We've heard a lot tonight about the successes they have. We have them in here. What you don't see in here is the failures. The one that they admit they turn away every night. The one that the director here admits he only sees four times a year, once every three months. Those are the ones that those of us who live in the neighborhood, I live off of Fulker and Happy Lane, we see them on a daily basis. The people who are turned away from, because of intoxication. Those are the ones who are hanging out in the park routinely. Those are the ones we see who know there's a homeless shelter in the area and they don't, whatever the mental process is, they are the ones who show up. They are intoxicated. Those are the ones we find, like in our communal stairwells, sleeping in our parking lots, passed out in our lawns, passed out in the Campbell Creek Park area. And I'm sure it's the same in the other directions here. So that's why we're really against the expansion of this shelter. So that's the biggest thing I say is, you know, they talk a lot about the successes tonight, but there's no, of the failures here that we see the same people again and again and again, passed out, intoxicated, that we call the police, that we do call the Community Service Patrol. Now, the gentleman from UAA says he's done the research, says they have the low strate. But, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the names here, but the staff says that APD will not share that information. So what I can see is from my own results is that we are routinely calling. We constantly have APD in the park nearby. We constantly have APD in our condo. And it's the, whether it's directly related to the homeless shelter or not, all of us in the neighborhood think it is that they know there's a homeless shelter, they get turned away. And yeah, they were drunk, so they're turned away. But that's now our problem in the neighborhood. It's no longer the homeless shelters by their own admission. So that's why I'm at least going to be the first one to stand up and say, no, I do not support this rezoning. I do not support any expansion of the facilities.
Thank you very much. Please stay put because we do have some questions for you. Commissioner Dean. Through the chair. Could you please tell me, how long have you lived in that particular location?
I've lived there since 2006. And, you know, you always knew that with Parks and, you always knew that with Parks and Anchorage, there's homeless issues and stuff. But like he said with the, two to three years ago with the institution of their no tolerance policy, that is when we started seeing, I don't know if it was an exact correlation, but that's when we started seeing more intoxicated homeless in the Campbell Creek Park, more people passed out in our, like, common areas of our condo area. The ABC television studios passed out in that area, which is right where I live too.
Thank you. Commissioner Parks.
I just have a quick question for you. I know that the homeless is a real problem in the city. I live close to Section 16 on Lower Hillside. When I moved up there 15 years ago, there were no homeless. And now we see the homeless and they're on a daily basis, all year round. We don't have any particular rescue centers or those kinds of things around our neighborhood. They're driven there because they're left alone. That's my opinion. I think no one really bothers them, so they're there. And I only say that to say this, is that I think the homeless is an issue that we have citywide. We have, we're trying to do some things in the city to take care of that. Saying all that to ask the question for this, Dan, how would you handle the problem that you have? If you do away with the ability for them to service any of the people, what do you think would happen in your neighborhood?
I was going to throw it the other way around. They say they have a very strict no tolerance people, but those are the ones that we see all the time. If they were truly interested in helping people, perhaps they should consider taking in the ones who are intoxicated, addicted to alcohol, addicted to whatever other drugs they are addicted to. Because those are the ones that we see in our neighborhood. And if they're truly interested in helping, those are the ones they should be taking in. Get them off the street.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
May we hear from the next person, please?
Good evening. My name is Steve Dougy, and it's, my last name is spelled D-O-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y. And I have testified on this issue before, and I appreciate the time tonight. I'm not a good testimony person, so I want to let you know that I am the president for the College Place Condominium Association, which is just a little bit behind the shelter and overlooking. My particular unit actually overlooks Rosen Court, which is where the fourplex the rescue mission owns, is located. And I am totally in favor of no expansion, no rezoning, no changes to any of the existing situations for this mission. I have been an owner of a condominium since 1989 until about eight years ago, when I could not take it anymore and moved. I am still a condominium owner at this complex. We've had all kinds of issues with homelessness, people coming through our property. We can't necessarily identify them as people that are at the mission because they don't, they don't have a button that says, I'm from the mission. But there is a problem in this area. We have had, this year in particular, an increase of crime on our, at our complex. We have never had the number of break-ins in our garages for our condominiums like we have had this year. So far, I know of at least 12, and I'm sure there's more. This Rosen Court, it is almost a systemic problem with the, all of the apartments that are located on this. And I'm not saying that the rescue mission's complex is the worst. There are two other complexes and there is a history of renting to bad individuals that have alcohol problems. I personally have watched people drive through our fences, totally, totally intoxicated. And the police can't do anything because they run into one of these complexes. So there is, there's an alcoholic problem on this whole court. So I would like to point that out. But we have individuals that have, you know, that don't have a voice here tonight. You know, their barbecues are stolen, their car stereos, their bikes, you know. But, you know, they don't have the time to come to these. And I personally was offended at the last meeting when I spoke to Police Chief Mu, stating the situation we had, where we had a realtor that was showing a unit. And it was an upper-floor unit. And when they got down to the stairwell, there was a homeless person in our stairwell. And the woman that was potentially going to buy this unit was frightened, rightfully so. And they left. They wanted no part of owning a unit in our complex. And when I mentioned this to Mr. William, well, Mr. Williams was at the meeting. But Mr. Williams felt that, and he suggested that we take a picture of the individual. And that individual would not be allowed into the rescue mission. And Police Chief Mu thought that that was totally reasonable. Totally reasonable that a woman is going to need to take, or any resident in our complex is going to need to take a picture of someone that is in their, in our stairwell for future elimination from, you know, being at this mission. And I'm not saying that, we know for sure that this person was an individual at the mission. But I think it's ridiculous. And I have mentioned to so many people. ridiculous, and I have mentioned to so many people what Commissioner... or Police Chief Mu's response was to my comment, and there is just disbelief. I personally feel that this mission is in a bad location. Tudor Road is... has got a lot of cars on it, and I would like to thank you, Commissioner Prus, for actually, you know, noticing and addressing the police call-outs to this area, because Chief Mu says that if you look at the records, each call is being answered and addressed, and that is not the case. So, I personally, at night, have almost hit three individuals crossing from the rescue mission, and it is a scarring experience, throwing on your brakes, trying to avoid three individuals because they go back and forth across Tudor, and it is a hazard. The Folker Park, you know, it's all these warm and fuzzies addressing, you know, picking up trash, having a monitor, you know, those are all warm and fuzzies, but the actual people on the ground, that's not really doing us any good. And, you know, the... all the branches of the park had to be cut really low because there were people hanging out in there, and we've done our part. And if I could leave with anything tonight, it's, please know that we have done our part as neighbors of the rescue mission. I know that homelessness is a big issue in this city, and I believe that every area of the city should be helping. I'm a big supporter Covenant House and Brother Francis Shelter and Beans Cafe, with food donations and all of that, so I believe in all of this. And I know there are success stories, but we have done our part. And this is a bad location. And I also would like to point out that Mr. Williams, at the last meeting I was at with him, stated that they were looking for a different location, and there was no plans for expansion. And this, to me, says expansion. And I would... I don't have any proof, but I would imagine that if any of those other, like the fourplex that's right next to his property, if that came for sale, I would bet that they would want to buy that also. I thank you again for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Please stay put. We do have one commissioner with a question. Ms. Dean?
Thank you. Through the chair. Just to get an idea of exactly where you live, are you... do you access your condo from East 42nd between Folker and Wright? Is that how you access your condo?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I'm not really sure where you are, then.
We are on the corner of 42nd and Folker. We have two entrances. One of them is off of Folker, and one of them is off of 42nd.
Okay, okay. So, I can see on the overview, then, that's where we are.
We would be diagonal to the horizon.
How many buildings are in your complex?
Seven. There's a total of 56 units.
56 units, okay. And what year was that facility built? Do you know?
1983.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Will the next person please come forward?
Yeah, my name's Al Bybee. It's B-Y-B-E-E. If it wasn't for the rescue mission, Ms. Dean, I was one of them guys out in the park. You know, if it wasn't for the rescue mission and what they're about, I'd still be there. You know, it's a... I'm a productive member of society now, you know, and it's... it just goes to show, I mean, if they were to take the mission away, the last gentleman was talking about crime, if they were to take that away, it'd be a little more than it is now. So, I mean, it is doing good. It does help guys like me. You know, I'm a... you know, I spent most of my life in the penitentiaries, you know, but, you know, through the rescue mission, I found my Lord, you know, and that's what it's about. You know, it got me out of the park, and it made me a dad again, you know, so it can do nothing but good. You know, that's really all I can say. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Will the next person please come forward?
My name is Richard Cowan, and I live on Rosen Court. And there are four people that live on Rosen Court, an engineer on Slope, a nurse, Mr. Williams, and myself. I've lived on property owned by the mission for 16 years. I find it a wonderful place to live, very little trouble. The neighborhood is more decent than you would expect considering its age. That's all I have to say. People are talking bad about a very good place. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. May the next person please step forward?
Thank you. Barbara Garner, G-A-R-N-E-R. If you look in the packet, page 55, that's my letter. If you've read it, I don't want to repeat anything. I am here, first of all, to say that the University Area Community Council did not approve 130. They did approve 132 and 131 at the September meeting. Ms. Robert McClung wrote that letter based on that meeting only. The October meeting, David brought up the 130, and there was no resolution. There was no vote. There was nothing. So, the University Area Community Council is not saying yes or no to that particular one. I am here, first of all, to say with regard to the young man who did the survey, there were two assaults in front of the mission last Saturday. If you go to crime mapping, you can find out a lot of that information. And when I have called APD, and they will get back to me, and they... I said, "Don't give me the details except other than if it was somebody who was homeless. It frequently is." So, the APD does cooperate in that sense. In the warmer weather, the people who do use the mission will go to the... out into the camps. I have done an interview over at the bridge where Campbell Creek is, at the end of Folker Street, years ago, and I chatted with them to see what they were doing. The community council was very concerned that they were going across Tudor Road to eat at the mission, and we saw that there were some incidents occurring where people were struck. In fact, two were killed. And we asked them what they were doing, and yes, they did go over there. They had seen incidents like that also. At one point in my records, which I also gave to a senior planner, the state of Alaska had a camera at Tudor and Lake Otis. They did a survey of the number of non-motorized vehicles that were crossing Tudor Road between Tudor Lake Otis and Piper Street. 99 of them, in the space of 13 hours, were directly across from the mission, going both ways, which is a significant number of people. And I don't know whether that is still true today or not, because that was done a few years ago. I will say that I've lived in my location. I'm in Walcott subdivision, lot number four. Obviously, I'm very close to one and nine. I have a long history. I've been there since this was a rural area. I moved into my house in 1967. That's unusual on Anchorage. Do we live in one place? I didn't know about the mission coming in until Channel 2 showed up at my door one morning in late July of 1988. What do you think about a homeless shelter going in behind your property? And if you look at the very last paragraph of my page 55, you'll see what I mentioned. We were never told. Never. Even the community council was not aware it was a homeless shelter. It went in as a church. None of them were aware that it was 100 men going to be there every night, and they started coming. They didn't start coming until 1988. They may have purchased the property in '87, but as far as the homeless people going out into the neighborhood, that did not occur until late July 1988. We've been living with it ever since. I have many stories. I chose to be more positive in my comments in here. I have an incredible history, and I like working with this man. He's a good guy. He has helped the neighborhood tremendously in improving it. But the others are right. The people with alcohol problems, they are still out there, and David is not going to accept them. The other thing is, some of them come there wanting to get in and sleep there at night. He allows those who have jobs during the day to reserve a bed. This is fantastic. However, there are others who are trying to get in, and they can't. Where do they go? They're still around a bus stop, waiting, and they perhaps would pass a WIF desk, but there's no room for them. I support the rezoning of the B3 properties only, as I specified in my page 55 here. I do not agree that you should take 2R3 lots and turn those into this particular program. Further history in here will show you, and the planning department has a thick file on this, which shows that the mission board has a history of buying lots, some of which have purchased in private names, and then, a year later, turned over to the mission. There are things that have happened that we don't approve. Nevertheless, I would urge you to try to get an exception for the PLI on the B3 lots, not in the R3 lots. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If you'll just stay put for one minute. Commissioner Wilson has a question for you.
Yes.
Thank you for your testimony, and obviously, you have a heart for the problems that are trying to be solved here, and yet, your views are grounded in reality, basically. What is... I'm curious. You have proposed, as you say, to zone the B3 lots, which are the ones on Tudor Road, there to... and only those, and not rezone the R3 lots behind them.
That's right.
And yet, the testimony earlier indicated that they needed that extra zoning to, basically to bring the facility into compliance with the zoning ordinance. I'm not understanding here.
To bring the acreage into the... what you request for a PLI. The minimum for PLI, I believe, is 1.75, and the B3 lots do not meet that.
Right.
That's why Planning Department is going after the other two lots, which are R3, and yes, they are owned by the mission.
And what would be the effect of not rezoning those R3 lots?
You're bringing a PLI into a residential zone.
Would it affect their operations, do you think, or...
Their operations? Perhaps not. Hopefully, it would improve what they are doing in a good way, but it does not improve this R3 little Walcott subdivision, because the PLI will permit other things to occur there in the future, when David may no longer be there, when I may no longer be there, that are not appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'd like to turn to staff at this particular point in time for clarification regarding the R3 lots and whether or not the Planning and Zoning Commission has the authority to rezone the B3 lots to PLI without including the R3 lots.
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to respond to that question. On page four of the rezoned packet, I describe this issue a little bit. It says, "Since the four B3 properties only include 1.41 acres, the rescue mission has brought in two of the R3 properties containing .44 acres that they own to satisfy the minimum 1.75 acres required for a rezone per Anchorage Municipal Code 2120-070." And then I say that the application... application for conditional use will be handled separately. So, there are four standards for a rezone, and per our Anchorage Municipal Code, the Planning Department cannot accept an application for a rezone unless it has 1.75 acres. The application wouldn't be before you unless they had come in with 1.75 acres. They have 1.85 with those two residential properties. They're just under it. With the B3 properties that they would like to rezone, and that it appears that the community would not like to have the R3 properties involved, they... if it had been turned in with just the B3 properties, we couldn't have taken in the application because it didn't have the 1.75 acres. Now, the Assembly, after action by the commission on the rezone, the case may be forwarded to the Assembly for a second public hearing, and then approval or denial of the rezone, and they may have some more latitude to deal with that issue of the two R3 lots. The commission could make findings stating that in this situation, the R3 properties, it'd be preferable that those weren't included in the rezone request, and that would be something that the Assembly might take into account.
Mr. Barrett?
Madam Chair, that answer is essentially correct. The short answer is the Planning Commission does not have that authority, but you can make a finding. The Assembly does and has used that authority in the past to approve less than 1.75 acres. Thank you.
Thank you. How many of you are there in the audience that still wish to testify? At this particular point in time, the commission has asked... the commissioners have asked for a short break. We'll take a seven-minute break and return. The Planning and Zoning Commission, December 5th, is back in session. We are hearing testimony on cases 2011-130, 131, and 132. If anyone wishes to testify, would you please come forward at this time? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Sarah Engibus, E-N-G-I-B-O-U-S, and I just have three short comments. I'm a volunteer at the mission, and one of the comments was about allowing everyone to go in, you know, with the no tolerance policy, and I work with the women there. And one of the things that the women love about staying at the mission is that it's safe. They can go in there, and they can know that the environment that they're in is protected, and they don't want to go to other safe... or places that are supposedly safe when they're not. And secondly, I wanted to say that we might have a mindset about who the homeless are in our community, and I guess I had a mindset like that before I started volunteering. And my youngest child graduated from Chugak High School in 2004, and one morning, when I went into the shelter and was with the women, and one of the girls there was a service high graduate from 2004, who was there because she wanted to get clean from drugs. But unfortunately, the only New Life Program for women is in Fairbanks, and she didn't have the money to get there, even though her family lived on the hillside. And so, she tried every way she could in all the facilities here in Anchorage, and ended up leaving on the arm of her boyfriend. And she had wanted to try and make a break. This is a place like a hospital. It's like Providence. It takes sick people, and they become well. And we honor Providence and all the service it does to our community. This is doing the same thing in a different framework. And finally, my third point is, I live downtown between A and C. There... I used to have the Community Service Patrol on speed dial, because every morning when I got up, there was someone under my bushes, or walking on my rocks, or walking in our alley, doing things that none of us like to have done in our neighborhood. It's an issue that needs a solution, and the Gospel Rescue Mission is working on behalf of that. And so, I am here in support of everything that we can do to release the homeless from the condition they're in, and make them, like you've heard, community residents. the condition they're in and make them, like you've heard, community residents who give back rather than take or ruin. Thank you.
If you would please stay there just for a minute. Commissioner Dean has a question for you.
Through the chair, thank you. I do have one question. Right now, there are two registered sex offenders using that particular address. I know when I've checked in the past, there has been quite a variety of registered sex offenders staying at that particular facility. How do you protect the women that are staying there from the predators that are also staying there?
They have very strict policies about the women and the men. And their conversation, they're actually not even allowed to regard. They will be separated. They will be evicted from the premises if they break. The rules are very strict. And the women there feel very safe.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify, please come forward. Please state your name.
My name is Christine Hestness. And I live in the College Place condominiums. I've owned a unit in there about two and a half years now. And our president testified earlier. And before that, the history is, my parents owned that land. They bought it in 1950, and they sold it about in 1983, and it became the College Place condominiums. So our family has a long history there and in the neighborhood. We've seen lots of changes. And I'm against this particular partition because I was hoping that the neighborhood would, like the Horizon House with the Providence, the healthcare centers going in, university, just the area has really built up, and there's a lot of traffic. Some of the residents of the Rescue Mission do cross the streets in unsafe manner, on both Lake Otis early in the mornings and on Tudor Road at various times. It's not safe for them. It's not safe for anybody. And I guess the other concern is the amount of people that are inebriated or just having problems that are out, kind of left to the neighborhood, roam around the neighborhood looking for a place to stay for the night when they can't get into the mission, which it certainly does an excellent job at what they do. I just question the location. I've called CSP on several occasions. Our garages have been busted into, just the doors absolutely smashed. And then all of our storage units were broken into. It's my understanding, it was every building. We have seven buildings, and there's eight units in each building. And we're right across the street from Folker Park, and then the Providence Center is there also.
Are there any questions? Could you please spell your last name for us? And then Commissioner Frederick has a question.
Okay, it's H-E-S-T-N-E-S.
Commissioner Frederick.
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you for your testimony. And it's nice to hear from people that have lived in the neighborhood for a long time and have some history of what's happened over a long period of time. Can you tell me a little bit about Folker Park and what happens there, if anything? What people use that park?
Well, it's a dog-walking park. There's a path that goes through there. People go over there and walk their dogs, and it's kept cleared so the bushes or the trees are, you know, limbed up higher now because people do, in the summer, the people are turned away from staying in the shelter for one reason or another. And so a lot of them would like to sleep there. And also at Campbell Creek Park, well, Campbell Creek down at the other end of Folker Street, because there's water there, and they congregate there also.
Yeah, we've heard a little bit about Campbell Creek Park, but I hadn't heard that much about Folker.
Yeah, also Folker.
But it does get used by camp...
Yeah, it does, uh-huh. And sometimes I don't feel safe going into... We have underground garages, and there'll be people just standing there, and I don't feel safe to, you know, open the door and just drive my vehicle, and you have to be real fast to get the door to shut.
What's been your experience with the police at your condo complex? Have you had occasion to call the police?
I called the condo association first, and they told me to call the police.
And what kind of response have you gotten from the police?
I just called the CSP.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, I didn't bother with the police myself, yeah.
Was it because of a break-in? It was somebody loitering?
No, my neighbors had already called. And the condo association president, when I called him, he said they've already been called, the police had.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've heard some comments that the police haven't been particularly responsive when neighbors have called. Can you... Do you have any comment on that?
Uh-uh, no.
Okay.
No knowledge.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Will the next person please come forward?
Yeah, my name's Ken Brown, B-R-O-W-N. I live right across the street, 2811 East 46th Avenue. I get them all. They come right through my yard. Two nights ago, some guy was urinating in my front yard. I about ran him over with my truck. I mean, this stuff's got to stop. This guy I've never seen before in my life. This guy that's taking this poll, I've never seen him before at my front door asking me questions. I mean, the creek is right across the street from my house. I've called the police a hundred times. Takes them two hours to get there. They're tired of putting up with this stuff. They don't want to have anything to do with that place. This last year's been better. They started cleaning out the homeless camps. It's cleaned it up a little bit. But these people don't need... We don't need anymore over there in this neighborhood. I'm scared to death to have my grandchildren come up here to Alaska to see this place. What are you going to see? These people urinating out in my yard across the street? They're... I mean, there's gays over there. This is crazy. This is getting crazy. I mean, I've had it. I mean, I don't know what's going on in this city, but they don't need anymore in that neighborhood. I mean, brown jugs making a mint as it is. You know, I mean, if they want to do it, send them out to that prison that doesn't have anybody in there, open up a brown jug and a post office so they can cash their checks and have at it. You know, I've had it with this place. You guys want to buy a house? I want to move. I've got to move. I mean, I'm sorry to say it, but I mean, I've lived at that house for 12 years. It's got nothing but worse. They steal everything out of my yard? I mean, what's next? We have to shoot people? I mean, they say they got control over these people? Yeah, they go over there in the park and get sober and go and have breakfast, and back they are again, getting drunk. So where are we going? Yeah, 000 tolerance. Yeah, in the morning, when they're having breakfast, yeah, they're all blowing 000. Anybody could do that. But come dinner time, those guys aren't over there. I see them all. I see them all. I know them all. I see them walking up and down the street every day. I mean, so you guys decide. You want to pass it and let them build more? Put more people in there? Have more people die on Tudor? There you go. It's all yours. Any questions?
Are there any questions? Thank you for your testimony. May the next person please come forward.
My name is William Schwab, S-C-H-W-A-A-B. And I'm here to support the requests from the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission. They're a very good organization, and their goals are to do good in the community to the homeless and the down-and-out. And you've heard how bad and seen how bad the homeless situation is in the city. And they're trying to conform to the rules of the municipality to be able to get more beds available to help alleviate people being out in the cold and out in these tents and out in the camps. And I can only see that this, the approving of this would do good by allowing a number of more people to be served by them.
Does anyone... Thank you for your testimony. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Ann Green, and I am also here to testify in support of the Rescue Mission. I have... I submitted testimony online, and it's on page 103. I won't reiterate the whole thing, but I would like to respond to some of the points that have been made by opponents. My understanding is that there is not other land available that the mission can move to. I would like to point out that what the mission is trying to do is reclaim 20 of the 30 beds that they had to give up in 2005. They're not trying to go beyond their initial capacity. And if we are going to move the homeless people out of the camps, which I am totally in favor of because the camps are not safe either for the homeless or for people in the area, we have to have a place to move them to. They will not just go away because we want them to. The Rescue Mission's New Life Discipleship Program is precisely the kind of program to get people off the streets permanently and make a serious improvement in the homeless problem as opposed to just chasing people out of one neighborhood and they go someplace else, and then they go someplace else when they're chased out there. And I hope that you will approve the rezoning and the conditional use permit so that they can build a dormitory for the people in the New Life program and reclaim 20 of the overnight beds. I share the concerns about the jaywalkers on Tudor Road, but even with that, I really hope that you and the Assembly will approve these proposals and also find a way to address the concerns of the neighbors.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions? Thank you. Will the next person please come forward?
We're residents of the College Square condo. My name is Mark Vingo.
Hi, my name is Val Ledbetter.
Could you spell both of your names for us, please?
Ledbetter, L-E-D-B-E-T-T-E-R. Valerie.
Vingo, V is in Victor, I-N-G-O-E. And I have been a resident of College Square condo since 1988. I've lived there off and on. My daughter lives there now. She's a college student, as well as working at one of the local hospitals. She is scared to death to live there. And we're looking at moving out. The issue tonight is not an issue of the good work that the organization does. I've been a school principal just about all my professional life and just recently retired. They do good things. I know that. And I know Anchorage needs this type of facility, but this is not the place to put this. This is a residential neighborhood. We have three buildings in our complex. There's numerous ones across the street. There is a large apartment complex behind us. I'm not sure how many are in there, probably a couple hundred. Then farther on down 42nd, you have another college or condo association. Crime has increased. I've had to contract with Guardian Security to protect my daughter. Val can tell you about the break-in that had occurred there. My daughters met inebriated people. We also have an open garage where you have to go down in the basement, met people down there. It's just not a good place to have this type of thing. And I know we need it. That's not the issue. The issue is, is this the right place? I don't think it is. Val, do you want to...
Hi, thank you. Two years ago this month, the weather was also cold, and our main door that leads to the garage was broken into. And the person had gone into my storage area and took a blanket, a frozen ham, and a big bottle of expensive liquor that was given as a gift. So, you know, it wasn't the ham or the blanket. It was the liquor that bothered me. And I echo Mark's sentiments when he says that we don't have anything against the Anchorage Gospel Mission. It's the Rescue Mission. It's the people that are... the homeless that are drawn there because of it, that may not use that facility, but that are around there because maybe their friends use it. I actually have mixed emotions, but one thing I do want to say is, a couple of weeks ago, when it was very cold below zero, I was coming, driving down 42nd Street, and there was a lady that was walking and carrying a bag, carrying a couple of bags. And so I stopped, and something that my husband wouldn't want me to do, but I asked her if she needed a ride anywhere, and she said that she was going to the mission. And she said that she was... So I asked her if I could just take her down there, and she said yes. And so I did. And she said that she had just come from Fred Myers, where she worked, ringing the bell for Salvation Army. So she just really thanked me and told me about what the good work it was that the mission gave her, you know, and bed to sleep, and that she had a job and thought it was really great that I had picked her up and taken her back since it was so cold. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Commissioner Wilson has a question for you.
You said, "This is not the place." That begs the question, where is the place? I mean, that's a very tough one, isn't it? Go ahead.
Right. It is correct. And as I said, I think that they're doing a very good job, the testimony that David gave, you know. We had a break-in just a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, in another one of our buildings. The need for the homeless shelter is there, but it's the people that are homeless that may not use the mission that it's attracting. You know, they're coming because maybe their friends are there. So... And that's what we are, you know, against. Does that answer your question?
Well, I was trying to fish for an answer here. Not another question.
I don't know where the place... where a location would be.
You know Anchorage a lot better than I do, but, you know, it seems to me, just not in a residential, professional community. When we first moved there, there was no native hospital. McLaughlin was the old McLaughlin. API was the old place. The lake, there was no buildings around that there. It's all changed. And I've watched that professional medical community grow up there, and it attracts a lot of folks down in that. There's a lot of traffic. There's no sidewalks on 42nd. Folks are walking down the middle of the road. But maybe an industrial area in Anchorage. Again, you know it a lot better than I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there someone else who wishes to testify? Please come forward. And if there are others in the back of the room that want to testify, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Tamara Brown. And I just want to expand a little bit. I think it's been clearly demonstrated and testified to that this is a clear public safety Two years ago, my stepdaughter was down from Vermont, and this is when we had a big issue with the folks on the bridge. She went running and came back about five minutes later in tears. She'd been harassed. They tried to grab her. Of course, we called the cops. They did come. The cops have been very... Anchorage Police Department has been very good at responding at certain times. If there was something else going... If there was something else going on in town that was more important, it would take longer. And I do appreciate all that they've done, and they did advise me to call them whenever we had a problem on our street, because that was the only way that it was going to be brought to the intention of the department, what was going on down there. Somebody testified earlier that the men and women are kept separate at the, at the shelter. Well, guess what? They're coming down on 46th Street to the creek and right out my front window. So, and I don't appreciate it. It is not a safe place. I don't want my grandchildren down there, and, and that's too bad. We have, we have young children in the summer riding their bikes, skateboarding, and at the same time, we've got some of these folks from the mission who are screaming profanities. They're urinating in the woods right across the street, and something really has to be done. So I strongly urge you to please not approve this. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay. No? Thank you for your testimony.
Hi, my name is William Thompson, and my family still has a home. I grew up in that neighborhood. My family still has a home there on 40th where my sister lives today, and I, I do a lot with the church, which is like two doors down from the mission. And, you know, I hate to see people confuse the mission people with the, the drunks and the homeless that are wandering around because they're two totally separate things. And, and I hate dealing with the drunks. They're not, you know, you've dealt with drunks before. They're not, that's not a happy thing to deal with. They're a pain, and, you know, it's, especially at a church, it's a difficult thing to deal with. But that's not the guys at the mission. We're not saying that whether they can stay there or not. We're just asking whether or not they can fix one of the buildings that they're currently, they currently own. And I'm glad to see a lot of people worried about the safety of these guys crossing Tudor, but, you know, I haven't, over the last 30 years, I haven't heard anybody say anything about all the kids that cross there. Granted, they're a lot faster, they're harder to hit, but there's all kinds of kids that cross there, too. Nobody said anything about them tonight. You know, people cross that from Taco Bell to McDonald's to Holiday, they cross there all the time. It's not just the mission people that cross there. It's neighborhood people, kids, all sizes and everything. And so just, just remember, you know, we're just deciding whether or not they can use the building that they own. And all the drunks and the homeless people, they're not the guys from the mission. So I just encourage you to pass the measure.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions? Seeing and hearing none? Okay. Thank you very much. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Fant. I live two blocks away from the Rescue Mission, and I've lived there for about two years. In advance, I'd like to thank the commissioners for their due consideration of this issue. You obviously have a deep concern, and you've done some due diligence with your staff to look at the issue, and thank you in advance because I know you're going to make the right decisions moving us forward. I'd also like to thank the Rescue Mission themselves. I personally donated articles of clothing to the mission. I believe what they're doing is a very worthwhile effort for our community. I'd certainly like to extend my respect to all the gentlemen and women that have gone through the program and are in it now to change their lives. But I'd like to point out that the issue here is not whether the Rescue Mission is a good institution or whether it does good deeds. The issue is whether it's in the right location. And I'd like to point out that in my opinion, or state that in my opinion, I don't necessarily believe it is. It's in a business zoning area now, and they're planning to expand into a residential area. I believe you've already heard tonight that residential area in Anchorage is in short demand. When I first heard it was there, I thought, my goodness, why is there a Rescue Mission here? Because it's so far removed from the other services in Anchorage. It just seems like it's disconnected with the other services that would be available. Couple of issues I'd like to point out. We heard also tonight that there was a study done comparing this mission and the crime rate against other similar services. But I'd like to point out, that's not really the, the real question. The real question is how does it compare to other residential areas, not necessarily to other homeless missions? I don't believe we have any statistics on that at this point. What I really want to point out is that what we don't have is necessarily any additional services in this area for the folks that are involved in this mission. So I'd like to ask to the petitioner necessarily, if we could, perhaps why they think this is the proper location for their services, and I'd like you to consider that as you move forward in making your decision. Thank you very much.
Could you spell your last name?
I can. It's very simple. F-A-N-T.
F-A-N-T. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Please come forward promptly. Thank you.
My name's Larry Aldrich, and I'm in favor of this. You know, I think the mission really takes kind of a bad rap here. I walk Campbell Creek Park twice a day, morning and night. I've done it for 10 years now. What I've seen is, is there used to be the normal crowd, you know? These were the guys that couldn't stay in the mission. They were the ones that was drinking, partying, and they was the ones kind of hanging out there. But over the years, and after the, the mission has instituted the zero tolerance, and after the city has cracked down upon getting the homeless camps from downtown, let's get them out of downtown. We got tourists, we got people. Well, let me ask a question. Where do you think they're going to go? Why we get so many people over there camping is because you're isolated. You're back out, you got the green, you got the woods right out back there. There's lots of places you can camp. I know this. I walk my dogs out in the marshes every day. There's campers out there all over, and it has increased. I don't see, I, I think we're kind of getting misconstrued here. They're driving the people out of downtown. People got someplace to go. The homelessness is not going to go away. Maybe by passing this incentive, we can at least take 20 more people and get them off the street, and they don't have to have that option of camping. I've just noticed that things have changed. I know people, I've heard testimony that the crime rate, this, that, and the other, but I don't believe that it's just because the mission has instituted a zero tolerance. I believe that we've getting the crowds from downtown that's migrating out. That's personal opinion. That's what I see. I've walked it. There's times that I don't feel walking safe in that, in that park anymore, you know, because I don't know the crowd. I used to know the crowd. I don't know them no more. And so there is concern, but what, I don't, I don't, I think it's, I don't think that it's a relevant point. I think that what it's doing is it's getting things confused, you know? And I think what the mission is doing is, is a good thing.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Will the next person please come forward?
My name is Lois Miller. M-I-L-L-E-R. I'm here to support the Rescue Mission. I have worked with the Rescue Mission for 40 years. First started when it was downtown in 1967, and we do services there four or five times a month. It's a wonderful work. The people there are very cordial, very respectful, and I've even taken my grandchildren there for services. I don't feel threatened. I don't feel afraid. All the workers that work there are wonderful, and all they're asking is to be able to use a room or another building that they've used in the past to make room for the New Life men, and they're all just really working to get their lives back together and make themselves citizens. And my dad, before he passed away, was, he worked there also, and also my husband, who passed away, they also worked there. And I continue to, to go there and just love to work there. And I just want to say that I hope that you will consider this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify? Anyone else at all? Okay. The petitioner's representative has eight minutes and five seconds remaining. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. Stacy, did you have a question?
Madam Chair, I just was going to ask the petitioner a question is all. And I can wait till he's finished.
At your pleasure.
Okay. My, my question's really short. It just, I, I need a solid number on how many people sleep in your facility along with the fourplex, because there are people associated with your facility sleeping there, too. How many total do you guys sleep a night?
I'm gonna, before Mr. William, Reverend Williams answers the question, my best understanding is that the people in the fourplex, are they homeless?
No. Those are renters.
Those are actually, that's a rental property, Ms. Dean. Historically, the number had been close to 100, and this was one of the points I was going to make. In point of fact, the conditional use permit for the homeless shelters is for 70, so it's actually a decrease of sorts from what had been in the past. And, and that's a part of this transparency process, I think, is, it's been an attempt to address community concerns.
Thank you.
With eight, I'm sorry.
Through the chair, Ms. Dean, thank you, Madam Chair. On page, so I'm looking at the conditional use permit application for the habilitative care facility, a 30-person residential-based adult addiction recovery program. And then I'm going to page nine of that packet, and this is the site plan, and this is the same site plan that's used in both conditional use cases. There's no site plan associated with the rezone because it's just looking at the rezone. Conditional use permit is approving the site plan. So they've requested 30-person conditional use permit for this addiction recovery program. That'll be located on both Lot 3 and Lot 2. It's, they're identified, it's really small. I'm sorry that the site plan's small and hard to read, but on page nine, the Tupperware Building is that Lot 3, and it's a two-story building. And there, that's going to be the main sort of location of their New Life Disciple Addiction Recovery Program, but they also, they sort of mix and match a little bit with Lot 2. Now, the homeless shelter is only on Lot 2. So those are the, that's, those two lots are the subjects of the conditional use permit. The homeless shelter, 70-person homeless shelters, that's what they're requesting. 70-person homeless shelter for Lot 2, and then a 30-person addiction recovery program for both Lot 2 and Lot 3, because there's a lot of mixing and matching that goes in between the two buildings. So that's where the services are located. They, the subject of the rezone involves, you know, all those properties, the, the 2R3 lots to the north, and then these four lots, Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 3 North, and then the Lot 4, are the subject of the rezone. Just to, I hadn't talked a lot about the specifics of the location, but I hope that clears it up.
Thank you. Now, you have eight minutes and five seconds. Go.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I wanted to thank the commission and everybody in attendance who spoke for and against the proposals here. There's a lot of stigmatizing prejudice, and I recognize that with respect to the homeless. I don't know if I can say, or that anybody can say, that every issue we see is necessarily anchored to the, to the mission itself. I know my experiences have been probably not unlike Mr. Parks's experiences in that in different parts of town, I've seen homeless people who I think are attracted to parks. And I think it's the parks and the camps that get rooted in certain locations that attract people. I know also in this particular location, it's a major thoroughfare, Tudor and Lake Otis, and there are a number of counseling services in that same area. There's St. Mary's, the food bank. There are a number of different institutions, counseling services, and other social services in that area that, that may contribute to an increase of, of people. Be that as it may, the mission has always been in a position of trying to extend a hand, give people an encouraging word, try to lift them out from their despair, and point them in a better direction. I have a handful of scattered notes. I apologize if this is not as coherent as it could be, but I wrote down each comment. There was one comment about the policy of zero tolerance, not letting people come in who are drinking. Actually, that was proposed by Tebop and Assemblymember LV Gray Jackson. They had encouraged the mission to adopt that policy to try to limit the amount of inebriates in the parklands, and so that was why the mission adopted that policy, I believe, successfully. I believe it's really helped eliminate the number of intoxicated people, as Reverend Williams discussed. There was another question raised about where do the people go? And I think, Mr. Pruez, you had commented on this. Assemblymember Dick Trainee actually arranged for a people mover bus to come by at 9:00 and pick up people. And as the Reverend Williams discussed, they'll try to help people with bus tokens to get them out of that vicinity to eliminate, reduce the number of undesirables in the neighborhood. I know the Reverend Williams and Mr. Frank Thomas Mears and other members with the mission have actively reached out to the community councils, to the neighbors, and they'll do so also as a part of this process here and talk with people, because they're looking for that feedback, the negative feedback more. They don't need people to tell them that they're doing a good job, but if people are concerned, they want to know, and they'll take whatever steps they can to make things right. There were some comments made about a, a location, you know, not here, someplace else. I don't know how to answer that. I can tell the commission that that was my initial gig, so to speak, when I came on in a pro bono capacity, was to try to help the mission locate and acquire other property, and we soon found out how difficult that was in Anchorage, and that was one of the reasons why here we are now, five or six years later, trying to get everything up to speed, up to code, and try to repair both the legal issues and the community relation and public relation issues as well. I will say with Ms. Garner's comments about the zoning issue, the mission has never opposed that, meaning if, if this, if the commission were so inclined to recommend approval subject to limiting the zoning to, the rezoning to the B3 properties, we would not oppose that at all. We're totally amenable to that. The reason we included the R3 properties was partly as a residential buffer, but primarily because of the 1.75 acre code requirement. And the only way we could meet the code requirement and satisfy the planning department was to bring those properties in. But if the commission wanted to limit us, limit the rezoning application solely to the B3 properties, the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission would be, would be entirely pleased to, to live with that. I'm frankly not articulate enough. I wish I were more eloquent. I wish I could speak from a spiritual foundation. I wish, I wish I could, you know, reach some of the deeper emotional issues. I think as a lawyer, we, we lose sight of that. I know that myself, when I've been dealing with the people in the mission, I've been stunned how many times I see the same type of recurring theme of lives that have been recaptured and saved, and people who are finding a purpose and moving forward. And no matter how jaded one gets, or no matter how cynical one gets, it's still a, a fresh reminder that this is a caring community and a place where we don't throw people away. The mission's been at that location since 1987. Are there problems? There have been problems. Can there be global solutions? I don't know. I mean, successive administrations for years now have, have wrestled with the problem of homelessness. I know that the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission does not have all of the answers, but I know that they're exercising their best efforts consistent with their experience and their education and their faith to address problems and save people, and I think they do an excellent job with what they have. I would ask the commission, please, to approve the rezoning application and the conditional use permits, which is consistent with the recommendation of the planning department, to, to approve all three, subject to the conditions that have been recommended by the planning department. And if there are no further questions, the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission would rest.
Thank you very much. Are there questions, final questions from the petitioner's representative? I have a couple of questions then. On page 38 and 30, oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
I wasn't as quick as you were.
You gotta be quick. Commissioner Frederick.
Thank you. I'd actually like to ask Mr. Williams a couple of questions, if you mind.
David Williams. Yes, sir.
Through the chair, Mr. Williams, you've heard a lot of testimony tonight, both in support and not so much support for your proposals here. Could I ask your reaction to the negative testimony?
Well, you know, I think that it's valuable. It shows us where we can improve, and, you know, I certainly, I think that unfortunately, on some levels, we suffer from our past rather than what we're accomplishing today. You know, it's very difficult to hear someone talk about their belongings being taken, and then try to somehow justify it, well, how do you know it's a homeless person, blah, 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 then, and that somehow belittles their pain and their misery, and I will not, you know, I don't feel comfortable doing that. The important thing is that we move forward rather than get stuck where we are. So it's painful to hear someone who is dealing with that kind of injury and not have an answer for them. I wish there was some way I could help them in their pain.
May I continue?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Have you had any thoughts as you've been able to listen to the testimony of how, how you might be able to improve your perceived impact on the surrounding community?
I think, you know, communication's the most important thing we can do, is to continue to communicate and continue to work with those in the community. You know, part of my personal dilemma is that I have no authority to go on anyone's property and tell anyone not to do anything, so really, the only value, or the only weapon that I, that we possess is that, our services. So if we can identify people who are misbehaving, then we can deal with those people directly. So, and, you know, and there was a comment made about, well, you should take in the drinkers. The two most important things that we provide at the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission is a relationship with Jesus Christ, the absolute first and foremost, and the second is safety. It's important for people to have a safe place to go. If you allow someone who is intoxicated in, they're, one moment they're very calm and docile, and then without any provocation, the next moment, they've broken out in violence. And interestingly enough, the people who have enjoyed our policy the most are the homeless. They absolutely love the fact that they can come to the rescue mission and not be afraid. And interesting enough is that the happy drunks were causing most of the problem, because they wanted to hug everybody, and nobody wanted to be hugged. So by not allowing the intoxicated men and women in the door, we've provided a very valuable service of safety. One intoxicated person will drive two or three sober people out. I would also like to address the sex offender issue, if I may. I've worked very closely with Department of Safety and Public Safety, and the thing is, is that these men and women can't get released from jail unless they have an address, and there's no verification. Quite frankly, I can register at your address without your permission, and have never stayed at your facility. And you can't remove them for 30 days, they're locked in for 30 days. So I'm constantly, every single day, we go through the roster, and we identify sex registered sex offenders. If they're noncompliance, we call the police immediately. That's the law. If they're in compliance, then we, where else are they to go? Our community council has stated that they would rather have them inside the rescue mission with the doors closed at night than walking around in the woods or in the neighborhoods. If they're in compliance, and they've, you know, satisfied all the laws of the land, and they, they're entitled to a safe place to be as well. So we monitor those things very closely. We make sure that we have the community's best interest and heart.
I'll defer to the other commissioners, I suspect my remaining questions will be asked, and if they're not, I'll ask them.
All right, thank you. Mr. Parks.
I've got a question about number of beds, and, and can you kind of explain to me exactly how that works? I know you've got some fourplexes, and I'm not sure I still understand it, I know Commissioner Dean's asked the question, and I, I still didn't get it. So can you explain to me the number of beds that you currently have? Not what you will get if we propose?
Right now, if every bed is full, we would have 70, 70 people in the building. Now, before, we had to shut down the New Life building, and that was 100% our fault. We had applied for a replat, had received it, and there was follow-up paperwork that, for some reason, we didn't do. I had no, that was way before my time. And then after, I think, 15 months, it expired, but we moved forward believing everything was okay, opened the building, put people in there, it was running fine. And when we found out that we, that we were in error, we immediately shut everything down and moved New Life into the building. Before New Life was in there, with, because they have, they require more space, we were sleeping 100 people a night. When New Life moved in, that knocked that number down to 70. What we're proposing to do is move New Life back into the building with 30 people, and keep that 70 number, we still have a total of 100. And the fourplex is really not even, the fourplex is on the residential property that, if we work to get this rezone, falls into legal nonconformity, I believe. You would know more about that than me, certainly. And it's, so, we would, like Barbara, we would prefer that not happen, that we not even have to do that, but we have that 1.75 acres that we have to satisfy. So the fourplex really doesn't even play into it.
Okay, so, so what I hear you say is that, under this rezoning, you would have 70 beds plus 30?
70 in the, in the, what is right now the rescue mission, plus the 30 in the Tupperware Building, which would come, bring us right back to the 100.
Thank you.
Could I amplify the, just briefly, because I think sometimes people have confused the New Life people with the homeless people, or, okay.
I know the difference. Thank you.
Sorry, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Wilson.
The, so, what are your plans? I'm a little fuzzy on what your long-range plans are. If, if you could do it, you would go with the 70 and 30 for a total of 100 sleeping there. And as the needs of the community change, how, what, how do you see the rescue mission changing to accommodate those needs? We're talking 10 to 20 years out.
Right. Here's the thing, because we are 100% supported by the community, we have reached a, really a perfect balance. If we had the funding, we don't have the facilities to increase our services beyond 100 men and women, we serve women as well. If we were to have this huge giant building, our funding would only allow us to service 100 people. So we found this really perfect balance. The only thing we're really trying to do is get comfortable within our buildings. Who's to say what the future brings? If we were to get an endowment tomorrow of a billion dollars, we still wouldn't be able to service over 100 people because of the restrictions of our buildings. I can tell you this unequivocally, right now, as it stands, there's no plans for expansion. We can't afford to expand, there's no plans to bulldoze the mission and build a new one. It would be nice, but we just can't afford it. And I think that's where the community's really concerned with the residential properties. It's not necessarily the properties themselves, it's the footprint that can be used in the future. So, you know, they're seeing a giant conglomerate of a mission there, and the reality is, as missions go nationwide, we are a mom-and-pop mission. We're a very small entity, and we've reached this wonderful equilibrium.
And that's on the micro level. On the, on the macro level, in that UMed district, Mr. Wilson, and this also addresses, I didn't catch his, his name, but the gentleman's name, who wondered about what would the right location be, he wanted someone from the petitioner to speak to that. The mission has actually found that this location is ideal in many respects. It's, it's a counseling, medical support area with a strong educational base. It's well-served, it's on a major, major road network, served by People Mover, which brings people, provides public transportation to employment and counseling and medical services. And so for a number of reasons, I think the long-term vision of the mission would be to remain in its current location, not expand, but continue to work to improve its community and public relations with the councils and neighbors, the businesses that are in the area. But the location itself is actually, in many respects, ideal for serving the targeted population of people who are trying to elevate themselves out of their condition.
And so, the B3 properties, the main complex now, are the, the heart of your, your services for the 100, and the additional fourplexes, or two parcels, are ancillary residential areas for the New Life program, correct?
No, the, I'm sorry, the Walcott 1 and Walcott 9, the resident, the R3, were included only because we had to get a 1.75 acre for rezoning, but they have, they have nothing to do, I mean, they're, they're owned by the mission, but they're not, homeless people don't live there, those are actually, it's a rental property in Walcott 1, and Walcott 9 is just a storage building.
Okay.
We have no intentions of doing anything with those properties beyond just leaving them alone, because the fourplex is a critical funding source, because we don't receive federal, state, and local funds. We can't afford to lose that funding source, so it's not like we have any plans to go tear it down or build on those properties. Those will remain just like they are. There's no, no plans to do anything with them.
Madam Chair, could I ask staff a question while the gentlemen stay?
Absolutely, please proceed.
R3, the R3 definition in Title 21 packet that we have, I have, I can read it, but I just wanted to get your opinion on stuff. I know this is not current, this is a proposed, this is provisionally adopted, I believe, is the term?
That's correct.
This big packet? Nevertheless, I wanted to bring it up for discussion purposes, if I may. The R3 zone here says it's, this district provides greater housing opportunities and efficient use of residential land near commercial, community activity centers, town centers, and areas well-served by transit. So it confirms what, what you've been saying about the, the location attribute, the characteristics of that location. If, what, for staff, what is the, is there any change in that strip of, of B3, B3 strip in there, proposed in the provisionally? I didn't look at the map.
Yeah, I think, I think your question is, what do our adopted policies say about this block and those B3 properties? The plan to go to is the UMed plan, that's the overriding neighborhood plan, it's not neighborhood plan, it's a district plan, but that's the plan to go to.
Okay.
Not any of the other plans, and it calls for all of that to be a medium-density resident, well, I'm sorry, it doesn't specify the density, it says residential. Now, the UMed plan is going to be updated still, again, I think the Commission has seen an update to that plan, two in the last few years, but, but there's funding, I believe that there's funding, and I think, I don't know if it'll take a year or two years, but the UMed plan, it will go through a, an update, because things are changing so rapidly in the UMed district. Providence is expanding, things are changing, so that's gonna go through an update. I don't know what that holds, but I can tell you that the UMed plan identifies this block and these B3 properties, and the properties behind them, as residential, and we view homeless shelter as a specialized type of residential, as well as the habilitative, residential-based habilitative care facility, the addiction recovery program. Now, your question, I think, was about the land use plan map, the concept land use plan map?
Right.
I don't have that in front, I, I have that.
I'm just trying to tie things together here.
Yeah. I just want to catch up with you here. The concept land use plan map, I believe it's this dark brown, so it calls for medium intensity, 15 to 35, or up to 40 residential, it calls for medium-intensity residential developments, and the implementation zoning, it suggests R2M, R3, B1A. B1A is neighborhood-serving. I think maybe that this concept land use plan map could maybe do a little bit more work on, on this site.
The, the two fourplexes that are now R3, those parcels are R3, and that density is not at the maximum density in that zone, is that correct?
Correct, but they're, they're pretty fully built out for the size of those lots, and their parking requirement, landscape requirements.
Theoretically, they could go up, and so forth, add more units, so.
And, but those, those units are, are sort of, they're commercial residential properties that the, that the mission owns. They're not part of the habilitative care facility or the homeless shelter.
I'm just trying to get my facts straight here, I appreciate that, thank you. I'm just leading up to the idea that you have said you wouldn't object to, that the PLA rezone be applied only to the B3 properties and not to the R3 properties, which were a concern of some of the neighbors that testified. And I'm just trying to mull over, you know, all of the factors here, this is a puzzle. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Prues.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. When, when did, when did you go from 100, what year did you go from 100 to 70?
I believe it was in 2005 when we found out that we had actually not done what we should have done, did the follow-up paperwork. And that's when we shut everything down and lost those valuable beds in the mission. And then we started in a very exhaustive search for available property in the Anchorage Bowl, and there, there's just none available. And for the very few properties that even looked promising, it was just, it didn't fit within the zone structure and the future planning of the area, so that's then when we had to change tactics.
So if this, if, if you went back to 100 folks, that would represent about a 40% increase in residents at your facility, what would the increase in staff be, number-wise, and where would they stay if they were not, would they stay in the duplexes or the fourplexes, or would they be off-site? Where would they park? How many people are we talking for the additional 40%?
The staff are responsible for their own housing, they pay for their own housing. If we just, if we have housing available, then, and they choose to live in that housing, then they have an option of renting. We didn't lay off any staff. You know, for us, we kept the same amount of staffs, because we always believed at some point that we would be able to reclaim those beds. We never imagined that we would be doing this for such a long time, but we always believed that we would reclaim those beds. So we didn't, it's not like we cut staff, we continued to maintain the staff that's there for 100 people.
So if, so by the increase of 40%, you don't think that would jeopardize any of your community outreach, local community outreach programs, or, or anything doing with the neighborhood, as far as your existing level of sensitivity, or, or maybe even more, you don't think that would jeopardize it by keeping the same number of staff? You don't think that would jeopardize it by keeping the same number of staff?
No, sir, I do not. In fact, I think that it's probably going to make us even more aware, because now, you know, because I've always maintained that the problem didn't get better because the numbers went down. The problem got better because we changed our policies, and a lot of them based on community suggestions. So I'm thinking that we're probably even going to ratchet it up, because we want to prove that if you put the 40 back, or the 30 back, or the 20 back, whatever we're able to reclaim, that nothing's going to change in the community, because that wasn't the problem. The problem was our management style, and we addressed that aggressively and took care of that problem. So we don't believe that there's going to be any problem, and certainly know unequivocally that there's not going to be a slack-off on our part as far as community relations are concerned. Absolutely not.
Are there any other properties, there was some mention about other properties. Are there any other properties that the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission or affiliates have any other properties that you own or have any interest in, in the area?
In that area, we own nine partials. And, you know, and there was another partial, right in the middle of our property that came up on the market, but we didn't buy it. It was, they were wanting more than it was worth. So, you know, I know there's this belief that we're going to grab up everything that is available, but that's just not our style. You know, we have been good stewards of our money. We're debt-free. Everything we own, we own, because we're working with other people's money here, so we've had to be very good stewards of it.
The other parcels that you own, are they not represented in these, in this action today? What do they use for now?
Two are empty lots, and there's a fourplex on another one. And then one, there's two rental mobile homes and one small, very small rental house.
Are they continuous to this property?
Sir?
Are they continuous, contiguous to this?
They're all touching, bordering upon each other, yes, sir. With that one blank spot in the middle on one side, that we chose not to fill.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Fredericks, did you have all, did you have any further comments that you wanted to make?
I have no more questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there, you still have 1 minute and 44 seconds left.
You know, not to, I thought the chair had a question on page 38.
I did, that's right.
And so, but I'd wanted to talk about, I wanted to briefly talk about the permitting process that we're going to have to go through in response to some questions that Mr. Frederick and Mr. Pruse had raised, and I thought it might be relevant to address it as well. Is this really is kind of a multi-phased, I guess, plan, so to speak? And the first, perhaps the most significant stage, would be the rezoning and the conditional use permits, but that's not the end of it right there. We still have to get permits for the habilitative care facility, if the commission grants the conditional use permit. So we would have to go through the Department of Health and Human Services to do that, and it's my understanding that those are reviewed annually, and so there would be a continual check and balance in terms of, we'd get a report card every year, basically. It's not like we would just simply forget our duties and our obligations to our neighbors and to the community. Instead, we would have the encouragement and the spur, so to speak, to work hard every year to make sure that we didn't lose ground, that we in fact improved our operations. And so as part of that permitting process, I think that was a relevant consideration that I wanted to bring to the commission's attention. Madam Chair, I don't know if that was your question, but I wanted to raise that point.
Thank you very much. I do have a question. On page 38 and 39 of the rezon application, 2011-130, there are a series of special conditions that have been suggested, and I'm wondering if any of those, if you are opposed to any of those suggestions on pages 38 and 39?
No, those, in fact, were our suggestions that we had proposed, principally with Reverend Williams working through the different community councils and the neighbors and drawing upon their input.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the commission? Seeing and hearing none, this hearing is closed. I am wondering, at this particular point in time, if staff has any further comments that they wish to give us as far as guidance, as far as the commission is concerned regarding this rezon? And specifically, I would also ask for staff's opinion on the concurrent rezon and two conditional uses.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, the guidance that the staff can give is to make three separate actions. One action, a motion in the positive for the rezoning, and then findings supporting the decision. And then, once that's dealt with, then a motion for either one of the conditional uses, but individually, and a motion in the positive, and then a decision, finding supporting the decision, and then dealing with the last conditional use. The conditional use, conditions of approval, for each of those individual conditional uses, they, they're just standard conditions, but there is a condition that says that this wouldn't take effect until a rezon was effectuated by the assembly. And in terms of rezones, you know, this is a recommendation that goes to the assembly, and, I mean, you're making a recommendation, assembly, for or against approval of this case. There's a difference between effective clauses and special limitations. An effective clause would be something like, you know, before this rezon could occur, property will need to be re-subdivided into one tract or something like that. But those effective clauses can, you know, can get in the way of what is the real issue, which is, you're dealing with, is the PLI district appropriate for these four B3 lots, or these six, you know, lots, four of them B3 and two of them R3? And of course, the commission could make a recommendation, essentially a finding, that the assembly should approve the rezon and not include the R3 properties. That's a, within the latitude of the commission's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What is the wish of the commission at this time? Mr. Parks?
I would make a, in case number 2011-130, the rezoning of approximately 1.85 acres from B3 general to, and R3 multifamily residential to a PLI. I would recommend that we, or I would make a motion that we approve this with the special limitations located on page eight of our package, and with the staff's recommendation that it be done positively. That it would be done positively, that they recommended it. That's it.
Okay. And it has been seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Wilson, do you accept the motion as it has been presented?
Yes. May I add a finding of fact?
Yes.
Or is that next?
That's next.
All right.
That's next. Is there any discussion? Is there an objection? All right. We do have some findings that need to come before the vote. Mr. Wilson?
That the, the motion approved, to approve, findings are that the rezon proposal will conform to the comprehensive plan and the other requirements, including specifically land use patterns. There is a, the standard is met in that case, which indicates that the B3 area is one contiguous area, and it is consistent to use it, is one area, and it can be used for, should be used for the, let me start over. That the B3 areas should be rezoned PLI, and that the R3 lots adjacent to the north are not needed for or desired by the petitioner or by the commission in approving this to be rezoned to anything other than what they are as R3, consistent with the UMed plan.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Findings of fact? Mr. Frederick?
Thanks. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on the, on the recommendation that the assembly consider keeping the R3 designation on the, on the two existing R3 lots. And that is that in doing so, would provide a more reliable residential buffer between the new PLI lots and the existing neighborhood to the north, and it would also remove the possibility of programmatic use of those properties without a, without a future rezoning action, so.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Findings of fact? Are there any, is there any objection to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, that rezon is approved. Moving on. To the conditional use, 2011-131, zoning conditional use for a habilitative care facility. Do we have a motion? Mr. Frederick?
I'm in the case 2011-131, the Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission, a conditional use for a habilitative care facility for a 30-person residentially-based adult addiction recovery program in the PLI district. I move that we approve, recommend approval of the conditional use.
Thank you. That motion?
I'm sorry, with the department recommendations on pages seven and eight.
Thank you very much. That motion has been seconded by Mr. Parks. Yes, please do.
I just wanted to clarify your motion. You had said, recommended approval, and I believe that on the conditional uses, you're...
Oh, yeah, we're the, we're the authority, aren't we?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Seconded by Mr. Parks.
Sometimes we are the authority.
We are the final authority, actually, on conditional use. All right. So, Mr. Frederick, is there anything else that you'd like to add or state regarding your motion?
No, only, only findings that it furthers the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and conforms to the comprehensive development plan in manner required by chapter 21.05.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks, do, are you supporting the motion? Do you have any additional comments and findings of fact?
I support the motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection to the motion? To the conditional use? Seeing and hearing none, that conditional use is approved. Moving on to case number 2011-132. May I have a motion? Motion to approve, please. Mr. Parks?
In case 2011-132, Anchorage Gospel Rescue Mission amended a, a request to amend de facto conditional use for 70-person homeless shelter in the PLID district. I make a motion that we approve with the department's restrictions on pages seven and eight of the package.
Thank you very much. This motion has been seconded by Mr. Frederick. Mr. Frederick, do you concur with the motion?
I concur.
All right. Are there any additional findings of facts prior to our vote?
Yes, I would like to have, to mention that it furthers the goals and the policy of the comprehensive development plan and conforms to the comprehensive development plan in manner required by chapter 21.05. Policies seven through 63 listed on page four and five of the comprehensive, of the package.
Thank you very much. Is there discussion? Is there objection? Seeing and hearing none, that conditional use is approved for case 2011-132. All right. Thank you all very much. We do have an appearance request. We have two appearance requests this evening. Would those parties please come forward? I would like to remind everyone that appearance requests are five minutes each, and you may not address any items that have been on tonight's agenda. Mr. McLaughlin?
Madam Chair, a point of information for the chair.
Yes.
There were two requests for appearance requests this evening, but only one is present.
All right.
So I foresee that it'll just be the one.
All right.
Just wanted to make that knowledge, share that knowledge with you.
All right. Thank you very much. Would the person that is here for an appearance request, please come forward?
My name is Ronald Leva, and I think it was back in 1987 when I donated to the mission to help him with some surplus supplies to get started. But it's like deja vu for the Brother Francis Shelter and Beans Cafe. We made big mistakes when we gave the conditional use to Beans Cafe and the Brother Francis Shelter, and we're suffering because of it today. It was poor public policy, but emotions got in the way. Moral panic, if anything. But I'm here tonight to address the safety of the overflow, because what you pass tonight is surely going to come back to bite you. And not using up my five minutes to tell you how, the example tonight is the Brother Francis Shelter, whose target was a goal of 180, but we granted them 240. The overflow in November was 151. At that location, we could handle maybe 180, three days triage, and you're out. It's 30 days with extension, but it's the 151 overflow that goes less than 50 feet over to Beans Cafe. You still have the pedestrian crossing. There are no crossings there. You're still on a 27% grade on the hill. You're still in a heavy industrial area. You're still basically in seismic zone five. You're basically there putting those people at risk, and it's an inappropriate location. Then with the great wisdom of this commission and the assembly, you gave us more. And everything we heard tonight, they're gone. Just like the commission that granted the conditional use for the Brother Francis is gone, the leadership is gone at the shelter, and the neighborhood is stuck with the results. And it hasn't changed, it's gotten worse. And each time we come before the commission, we have issue fatigue. And each time we come before the Commission, we have issue fatigue. It's killing me. I almost came to tears to see what you did tonight. It never will even come close to addressing the problem or even coming close to the comprehensive plan. The spirit and intent of that conditional use was to make those people guessed. They're not neighbors. They're not good neighbors. They don't respond. Potter, Tim, he mentioned about like a runway. If you're granted one runway and there's noise and there's overflow impacts, surely if that happens, don't put it 50 feet away with the overflow. We're stuck with that. You haven't done any good. And as far as the response, hey, call me a Grinch, call me Scrooge, but call me compassionate that you've overpopulated the area with these homeless issues down in, I'm scared that guy's the principal because he said, send them to an industrial area, or they're going to get hit by cars. I mean, and then more services follow. Don't believe that the services are there in a heavy industrial area because they're not. Now we have the clinic crossover on Fourth and Juneau. You drive down there, I'll give you a tour. There are no crosswalks between Third Avenue to Fourth Avenue. There's no signaled crosswalks. You're on a hill. The bus stop, they don't use it. They stop in front of the shelter, and it blocks traffic. It doesn't allow it free passage. And that's a truck route. I mean, someone's going to get killed. It's just real sad. I just can't believe it continues. And we're already six months from what we agreed to, whether it had been a memorandum of agreement with the Brother Francis. But no one's called traffic engineering. No one's addressed the bus stop. No one addressed the crosswalks. It just gets filtered out. And where's all the people's testimony? They're gone. The people who live there, Mr. Brown.
Mr. Elida, thank you for your testimony. Your time is up, unfortunately. Thank you.
Hopefully, there will be a question. But, you know, there's no sense confusing your head with facts because your minds are already made up. But I will courteously and professionally ask, are there any questions?
I'm not seeing any questions in the queue. Thank you very much for your testimony.
I go home sickened by this body.
I have been asked by the Director to poll the Commissioners as to who will be able to attend the work session on Title 21 this Thursday from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. Thank you for raising your hands. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Would you please inform the Director that eight of us will appear at the Planning Department on Thursday at 3:00 p.m.? Thank you. Are there any other, I don't think we're going to have any comments on committees unless someone would like to make a comment. There's no Title 21 discussion. Any Commissioners' comments? Do we have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Frederick.
Move to adjourn, ma'am.
Seconded by Ms. Dean. Is there objection? Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.